Welcome to the June 16th, 2025 meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Veneth Hamobathy. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zwerko?
Here.
Andrew Lamb?
Here.
Josh Levine?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
Peggy Sheldon?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute/unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now.
Sarah Heenan, I know my name, please.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone online? Doesn't look like it. Okay, great. All right, we will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to let flag to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. And today, we're going to start our meeting differently than we usually do, and that is because we're going to take this opportunity to honor and to recognize Mark Gold, who has joined us here tonight. We reached out to him last week to make sure that he joined us because we thought this was important to honor and recognize his 16 years of service to the Select Board. I think all of us have a sense of what goes into this job and the amount of energy and time and dedication that it takes. And to do this for 16 years shows an incredible level of dedication and commitment to this town and a love for this town. And, you know, I think it's important that we do recognize Mark's service and everything that he's given back to the town. And so we do have our state rep, our state senator here with us as well for citations. We have got a presentation, but before we get into all of that, I did want to just open it up in case members of the Select Board also wanted to add any comments. Dan?
Sure. Thanks, Veneth. Mark, you know, over the past few years, it's been really truly an honor to work with you. And, you know, I had a small gathering, excuse me, on election night, and the first words out of my mouth were recognizing you for several decades. I mean, we're talking like 30 years of service to the town of Long Meadow. And, you know, not many people can say that, that all the work and effort and homework you put into each and every meeting. And although certainly times we disagreed, me or other folks with you and your stance on some issues, I always knew that you've had the best interest in Long Meadow. And I'll just close by saying thank you. And also, you know, now it's been an honor to serve with you. I know your wife has done so much as well for the town of Long Meadow, and now you'll be able to spend more time with your grandchildren and your wife and kids. And I wish you nothing but the best in Long Meadow, certainly a better place because of everything that you've done. So, thank you.
Mark, I had the pleasure of serving with you for four years, and as I sat down election night, it was really, it was truly an honor. I've learned a lot from you. I know that in the future, and as I have for the last four years, a lot of times I will be looking at something and I'll say, huh, what would Mark say about this? Or how would Mark think about this? Because I think you brought a good perspective on a lot of things, and I certainly learned a hell of a lot from you. And now that I'm the elder statesman, it's, I got really big shoes to fill. So just wanted to really say thank you. And you reached out to me a couple days after about water rates. And keep doing that because I do appreciate your input. So, yeah, thank you for everything. We really appreciate it.
Mark, I also want to personally thank you so much for everything you've given to Long Meadow. I've, I moved to town in 2008. I think I started, I've been on boards, various boards since 2010. That entire time, you've been on the Select Board. And, you know, I, I can't, there's so many myriad things that you did to contribute to this town that I got to see, like, you know, 16 challenging town budgets, 30 interesting town meetings, you know? Countless big projects, small projects, the high school, the DPW building, the adult center, the Will Swamp Fields, the October snowstorm. Your leadership was integral to all those things. And, you know, I think it's evident to everybody, your hard work, your dedication, you're detail, you're detail oriented, you, you know, always ask the tough questions, you dug into the details, which was to the benefit of us all. I think we all know that, you know, in this position, you can never hope to have everyone like you all the time or agree with you all the time. I think the most you can hope for is that people will respect you even if they disagree with you. And I don't know anyone in town who doesn't respect everything you've done for all of us. So, thank you so much.
And I'd like to invite our state representative and our state senator up if you all have.
Where would you like?
You guys want to come up here maybe?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And next budget, we might need a little. Thank you, Mr. Chair of the Select Board. We've done this before honoring or recognizing people that have served on the board, but for me, this is a little bit more personal, a little more special. For those who don't know, when I got elected to the House of Representatives in 2008, Mark got my seat in a special election after I resigned in 2009. So to have you on the board that long, well, it reminds me how long I've been in the house. But it really, watching you, and I think Dan, you said it best, we shouldn't all agree on boards. I mean, if we do agree all the time, there's something wrong with the makeup of the board. So it's good to have varying opinions. And I always knew you did your homework. You, you know, you did, you went the extra mile on everything, and I think that was appreciated by anyone who was watching, anyone who's paying attention. But just watching everything you've done, I appreciate it so much. And anybody who's been in politics, even though they're not our seats, we represent them whether it's Select Board, School Committee, you know, State Representative Planning Board, wherever it might be, we sometimes get attached to them, and we want to know that when we leave, they're in good hands. And I knew right away that the Select Board seat was in great hands because I knew everything you do is for the betterment and for the love of the community you've lived in for so long. And I, as well as I know the senator will read his in a second, but I have a citation for you from the House of Representatives. And look at those twins. They're joking. This is the official uniform of former Select Board. So, Mark, be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Mark Gold in recognition of your commitment and dedication as you worked with passion and pride for the betterment of Long Meadow and its residents during your 16-plus years as a member of the Select Board. The entire membership extends its very best wishes, the hope for future good fortune, and continued success in all your endeavors, signed by the Speaker of the House and by me, your state representative, Brian Ashen. Congratulations.
Not to be outdone by the House. Certainly, Mark, your years of service and the respect that you have gained within the community and from each and every one of your colleagues here, I really shows through in their comments today. I will say, 16 years ago, the Select Board seat definitely had a serious improvement in going, you joining this board. But having spent 16 years in elective office in the town of Ludlow, 16 years is long enough. That is for sure. But honestly, whether it's an event that we have in the community, whether it's going to a Select Board meeting, whether it's tackling some of the thorny issues that communities face, whether it's at town meeting or boards like this, having somebody with your experience and understanding how this community operates, what the flavor of the community is, and a guiding voice to lead it for 16 years is pretty incredible. Think of how this community has changed in those short 16 years. Building that we're in wasn't here. Improvements to this community have been tremendous over the last decade and a half, and your fingerprints have been on each and every one of those impacts. You will have a lasting impact in this community over your 16 years of service. I'm proud to say that I call you a friend, but also someone who has represented this community well. So on behalf of the Massachusetts Senate, we hereby extend our congratulations to Mark Gold, Long Meadow Select Board from 2009 to 2025, in recognition of your dedicated and committed leadership, mentorship, collaboration, and your work with town administrators, departments and residents using research thoughtfulness to move Long Meadow forward. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its very best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and a copy of transmitted to the clerk of the Senate and signed by me. Congratulations.
And.
That's your cropping sport.
Not to be outdone, I'd say legislature. Me, the Select Board of the town of Long Meadow, we actually have a plaque. So to read the plaque, the town of Long Meadow gratefully recognizes Mark Gold for serving on the Select Board from 2009 through 2025. Thank you for your many years of exceptional service to the town and its residents.
We should get the whole board and Lynn, come on in too. We'll hold these. You hold that one with Veneth.
Michael Grabbert.
Yeah, Mike, come on. Yeah, come on, Mike.
There we go.
Front page reminder.
Watch out.
Okay. Great, thank you all. And now we will move into Select Board reorganization. So I want to just begin by saying that it has been an honor to serve as Chair of the Select Board for the last year. I am so proud of the work that we've done over the past year. We've made such significant strides in terms of the work in making up for deficiencies in our infrastructure and making significant investments in our infrastructure, as well as planning and thinking ahead about the infrastructure changes in the future and what we need to be doing in terms of roads, water mains, and everything else. Also, I'm proud of the work that we did in improving, I think, government efficiencies with some of our boards and our committees, as well as some of our processes, and also some of the goal setting that we've done. And that has really changed the focus of the Select Board in the short term and in the long term. And also, as Chair of the Select Board, it's impossible to do this job without the incredible support of the town manager and the assistant town manager and our admin assistant. So I want to thank all of you for, you know, all of the long phone calls and Zoom meetings and talking through every issue, big and small. You know, it's, it's made such a big difference, and also it has given me such a better appreciation for everything that our town staff has to deal with, the amount of pressure that they're under, and what they're asked to do every single day. And so I want to thank all of you for all of your support and the rest of the staff. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Josh Levine as the Chair of the Long Meadow Select Board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I move that we appoint Veneth Hamobathy as Vice Chair.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And I'll move we appoint Shelley Mainer DeWolf as clerk.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Do you want to switch seats?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got a better looking nameplate. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate all you've done. It's been a trying year, but a productive year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to announcements. Municipal aggregation, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 8th at 6:30 at Greenwood Center and virtually. For additional information, please visit www-longmeadowcommunityelectric.com. Community input survey, future use of town buildings. The town of Long Meadow is seeking public input on the future use of Town Hall at 20 William Street, the community house at 735 William, Long Meadow Street, and Old Town Hall at 417 Long Meadow Street. Please take a few minutes to share your thoughts by completing the survey link here in the announcements and on the town website. Town offices closed for Juneteenth holiday. Town of Long Meadow municipal offices will be closed on Thursday, June 19th, 2025, not observance of Juneteenth. Select Board summer schedule, looking ahead to the summer, the next meetings for the Select Board will be held on July 21st and August 18th. Next up, we have resident comments. If anybody would like to speak, please approach, and you can state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Mr. Godfrey, how are you?
Thank you. My name is Earl Godfrey, 156 Barrington Road, Long Meadow, of course. First, a couple of things. I'd want to thank very much the town voters at the annual town meeting who overwhelmingly approved the enactment of the optional veterans benefits that was passed under the HERO Act and signed into law by Governor Healy, August of 2024. It is very much appreciated, and we're gratified that the town supports us. I would also like to say that as a representative of many veterans' organizations and an advocate for veterans, we very much appreciate how the town, the Select Board, and the town administrators support veterans in this community. And we very much appreciate the fact that you showed up on Memorial Day and you stayed there for the entire event. And it, I had so many comments from people who were so moved and felt it was such a wonderful, warm hometown event. They were very grateful, and we thank our town manager and the Director of Veterans Services, Lena Velturo, for putting that together for us. The only additional comment I have, and I know you have a lot on your plate, water and sewer rates. So, and I've read everything on that, particularly the work that Mark Gold has done, which is almost mind blowing. If there's anything you can do in consideration for veterans, most of whom are seniors, or a great many anyway, and the seniors in Long Meadow, when it comes to how you set or structure the rates, it would be very much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. Tonight, or at your next meeting, you have the unique and overdue ability to improve the setting of water rates, water and sewer rates. I am qualified to opine on both rate setting and accounting. Fixed rates, absolutely in favor. Springfield and others have done it. The fixed costs, I calculate 2.3 million. 54% of the budget is fixed, 2 million or 46% are variable, substantially all the costs of purchased water from Springfield, per the town's memo. You have the opportunity to do this appropriately. Fixed rates should capture the fixed costs and are known in various industries as capacity payments. At a 300% increase, you capture 836,000 or 36% of the fixed rates. You've got quite a bit of ways to go there. Tiered rates, thank you for taking this off the table. I emphasize the following. Since the full amount of fixed cost is not being absorbed by the fixed charges, that is under absorption in cost accounting. Therefore, the higher water users are already subsidizing the lower users. Usage period, this proposal to start the new rate period on April 1st, the fiscal third quarter, is not appropriate. The Select Board has turned this down twice in the last 10 months on my recommendation, and I'm getting tired and concerned. Water and sewer on the accrual method of accounting. I sent you the financial statement footnotes. Ian and Paul Prestersik have both confirmed this. Someone needs to ask the question, is the town on the accrual method, and how does this make sense? Springfield notifies Long Meadow on January, the new rates effective July 1st, and they bill on the accrual method. Salaries and wages in Long Meadow change on July 1st. That's the other major component. Both of these support July 1st for the new rates. That is the matching concept in accounting. Springfield has $188 million annual operating budget and 450 of construction. Their rates start July 1st. Agawam and East Long Meadow both set their new rates effective July 1st and are on the accrual method. Why is Long Meadow different? My proposal, which Mr. Levine has been asking for and is somewhat supported by the town's proposal, is establish a full operating debt, service, and capital expenditure budget in April, place the approved budget and any debt bonding on the May warrant, rate change is effective July 1st, agrees to the town budget and the Springfield increase, and gives transparency to the rate payers. Not the 20% that'll be for fiscal 2026, and 11% is on the warrant. I don't understand the proposal before you tonight. If you look at it, Q4 fiscal 2025 is being used to calculate 2026. That's a violation of both the accrual method of counting and the matching principle. One last thing. You do not have anything that I can see for engineering in the budget for 2026 and 2027. It should be in water and sewer, not general account. And there is nothing in here for stabilization. You got a $500,000 shortfall. It's in your Select Board policies. You should have a stabilization fund on top of the $2 million. Thank you for the extra time, Josh.
Anyone else?
Just a reminder, if you're on Zoom, press the raise hand. I don't see anybody with their hands raised.
I'll move on to Select Board comments. Andrew?
I should have said this before. I didn't really see the, I didn't get a segue, basically, but I want to thank Veneth for being our Chair last year. I think you did a great job. It's not easy. You were first point of contact for so many, not only messages, but also plenty of complaints, I'm sure, and things that we didn't need to deal with because you were handling. So, thank you. And I'm sure as Chair, you want to speak up, just sell your mind, but you've got to facilitate and let everyone have their say, and you did a great job with that, too. So, thank you. I also want to congratulate Dan and Shelley for winning the election, and you guys both ran great campaigns. I'm looking forward to another great year working together. I want to also congratulate the LHS girls tennis team, which won the state championship against Wayland, I think, in Boston. So that was fantastic, another feather in the cap of the town. And the last thing, on the topic of tennis, you know, I was very interested last fall in trying to help find a way to like better use the defunct clay tennis courts at Bliss Park. And I remember I went to Lynn and I proposed like, well, what if we made them pickleball courts? And I remember Lynn said, you know, maybe, but let's wait for the Parks and Rec people to kind of give some thoughts on that. And we got a letter from them last week, and I was thrilled to see that they were very supportive and encouraging in this idea of pickleball courts. For those who don't know, you know, clay courts require a lot of maintenance, and with our very nice lit, 12-lit tennis courts near the high school, there really wasn't much demand for them. You not only have to kind of open them up with the DPW doing a lot of work, but even as a player, you should be, you know, proper etiquette would require you to like sweep them afterwards. So just a lot more work involved, and they just weren't used. And I think that this could be a really good idea. I think all of us are very wary, I think, of any new expensive projects in town, especially with the high school coming on board and investments like fiber. So, you know, I think that it wouldn't be great to propose some sort of expensive new project, but this is definitely something that CPC funds can be used for, and I hope that we can pursue that. I hope that the Parks and Rec Department will pursue an application. If they don't, I'd be happy to do it as a resident applicant because this is something that we could definitely utilize better. CPC funds could also be used to kind of revitalize the basketball court at Bliss Park as well. You can change two tennis courts into six pickleball courts. So you could, if you wanted to retain two clay tennis courts, you could, and have six pickleball courts, or you could have 12 pickleball courts. And the last thing I say is, for those who are true aficionados and watch the French Open a lot and love clay, you could actually go to Forest Park, and there's still many wonderful clay courts there as well. So I'm hoping we can see something moving at Bliss Park this coming year.
Yeah, so I want to begin by congratulating Dan Zwerko and Shelley on their election wins and also all the other candidates that won and everyone else that ran as well. Shelley actually sent me a statement to read. As you can see, she's not here tonight, and so I just wanted to read that real quickly. It says, Shelley Mainer DeWolf is honored and excited to have been elected to the Select Board and is deeply grateful for the support and trust of the community. While she's unable to attend the first meeting due to a prior work commitment in California, she is looking forward to serving the town and will be present at the next meeting. And so that's just an update from Shelley. And then another comment, I, last week, we had a special Select Board meeting and talking about the situation with Mr. Gunn. And one thing that I failed to mention during that meeting was the tremendous support that the Ochoas have received from the veteran community in Long Meadow. This is obviously such a difficult situation for them, and the veterans group here, you know, Earl, who happens to be here tonight, Earl Godfrey, Lena Velturo, and so many other veterans have stood with them and supported them during this very difficult time, and I wanted to just acknowledge that and thank the veterans in our community for standing with them during this. And then my last comment was that we do have a couple of updates on Long Meadow Fiber. The design and engineering is basically complete ahead of schedule. Fiber Spring is going to be developing, you know, recommendations for construction and a financial model, and that should be coming before the Select Board in our August meeting. They have also submitted poll applications for all the polls in Long Meadow, so all 2,000-plus polls. And then something also to just preview is that the Select Board, as the MLP board, will have to appoint an MLP manager, and there are some details kind of being worked out on that end, but that is also something that will probably be coming before the Select Board in the next couple of months as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, first, I wanted to thank Veneth for, I thought you did a great job as Chair, and obviously, as of late, we've had a lot of unfortunate issues, and I think you've done a really good job representing not only the Select Board, but the town of Long Meadow. And I think, as Andrew alluded to, you know, you get thrown a lot of curveballs during your time on the board, and Veneth, I think you stepped right up and did a great job. And also with municipal fiber that you mentioned as well. I think we're going to see a lot of benefits to the town, and you just have been, you know, leading the town very well, and I thought you've done a good job and wanted to commend you on that. And Andrew, thank you for your congratulatory remarks. And I wanted to also congratulate Shelley for her win. I know, running for the first time, it can be very difficult, and sitting on the board with not having a woman on the board since my three years being here, I think the last woman that we had who did a good job was Marie Angelis. She was on the board for, I think, two terms maybe, or maybe three, I forget. But so it's great to have a woman on the board. I'm looking forward to working with Shelley. She ran a great campaign, and I'm excited to work with her moving forward. Andrew mentioned the tennis team. I think they, they won the states. I wanted to mention that. And also, last week, all of us went to the graduation. I see Dr. O'Shea here. That was a spectacular event. It's hard to believe that I was walking on that stage, geez, like over 20 years ago, but a fantastic event, and I think Long Meadow's in good hands. We have a bright future with, with all the individuals that are moving on to college or the next chapter in their life. So I think that was, I think that was it. So, I think that was, I think that was it. Andrew, the last thing I'll say is, I was that kid that was not brushing the tennis courts as a kid, so.
You weren't the only one, I'm sure.
But, thank you.
I'll let everyone else go first, so everyone said mostly what I was going to say. The, I'm sorry, the graduation had all five Select Board members there, and Shelley was able to give her son his diploma, which was really nice. It was great to see everyone there. It showed what a talented class we have musically and intellectually, really, it was a really stunning night. And I think we can talk more about the, when we get to the letter, we'll get to correspondence about the Rec Department recommendation, although I do, pickleball is very noisy, and that's...
Sure, that's something to consider.
Yeah, that's something, I play on most Sundays, but I can, if I lived by it, I would probably go crazy. So, but it's something definitely to talk about more. I know they're working on technology to get around it. But that's, I think that's it for Select Board comments. Anybody else have anything else to say? No? Okay, great. Lynn, we'll proceed to Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. So, I have two, or an update for both pools, Reynolds and Greenwood Pools. We had planned to open them on June 14th, but unfortunately, we were not able to meet that date. Reynolds Pool, last winter, while they were making upgrades to the electrical system, there was an unexpended code issue that was triggered by, by code issues that required the town to both move and replace electrical control components in the pump room. The lead time was six months, but at that time, the contractor and engineer had been really optimistic that we were going to get the parts. Unfortunately, that has not happened, and so, as a result, the current substantial completion of the electrical upgrades needed to make the pool operational is now at the end of June. And Greenwood Pool, the company who won the low bid to do the pool opening, did not sign the contract, and as a result, we awarded it to the second low bidder, which obviously delayed things a bit. Currently, they're scheduled to arrive on site, they were there last Friday, to be in the process of opening the pool, and Elm Electric is also there finishing installation of a new sump pump and other upgrades. Their work is going to be finished midweek, next week, prior to Connecticut Aquatics arriving. They were also going to be, there's also going to be some additional excavation work happening outside the pool area over the next few weeks to fix the drainage system, but that's not going to have an impact on pool operation. Beyond the delays caused by parts not being readily available, the weather made progress associated with the excavation work for that drainage go slower than anticipated. So, I do anticipate Greenwood Pool to be open in the next week or two, but obviously, Reynolds Pool is going to be a little bit behind that. But with, with the preparation of getting the pools open, we were able to paint the locker rooms at Greenwood. Thank you to Select Board Members, Warko, for liaising with the town and Sheriff's Office to get the Greenwood locker rooms painted. The work has been on the DPW's to-do list, but was unable to be completed before opening day this year. Thank you to the Hampton County Sheriff's Office for their help getting this done. There are some before and after photos in my report that really show you the amount of work that was done, so we're really grateful for that. Road resurfacing updates: Caracas Construction continues with their drainage work on Shaker Road. Structure work has begun on Cooley and Emerson to replace stormwater drains in preparation for paving later this summer. All of the drainage work for the contract is anticipated to be complete by the end of July, early August. Mill and overlay on Pondside is going to begin this week, as there was an opening for the contractor, and this section of the project does not require structural work. Mill and overlay for the remainder of the project is ahead of schedule and is anticipated to begin in mid-July or early August. Obviously, the schedule is subject to change based on weather, and all information and updates related to the road resurfacing work is available on the DPW's road resurfacing page. The L Project water main work is starting again, night work's beginning tonight, June 16th, at the intersection of Forest Glen and Long Meadow Street. The work is scheduled to take place from tonight, June 16th, to the morning of June 20th. Work hours are 7:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. During this work, Ludlow Construction will be at the intersection of Route 5 and Forest Glen. You can follow along for this project at Route 5 and Converse Street Reconstruction page on the DPW website. And we had a pump issue at the Emerson Road Pump Station. So, just as some background, the Emerson Road Pump Station has three pumps that operate on a rotating basis. This pumps all of our wastewater through the cross-country sewer main, under the Connecticut River, to Springfield's treatment plant. In addition, we have a spare pump that's in storage. In the fall of 2024, one of the backup pumps started to make noise and was sent to apply dynamics to be rebuilt. At that time, the projected completion date given to DPW was April of '25. Due to issues getting parts, the current estimated date is now August of '25. In May of '25, another pump lost a bearing, and DPW began the process of seeking quotes to repair it. On Monday, June 12th, there was a catastrophic failure on one of the two remaining pumps, likely caused by an object making its way into the pump station. The one remaining pump that is left is the oldest pump, which is unable to handle the flows. This pump is on the verge of overheating and failing itself. DPW has set up additional diesel-powered bypass pump system to prevent a systemic breakdown of the town's wastewater system. The pump with the broken bearing has been sent off for emergency repairs. The projected repair time on that pump is four weeks. And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Lynn. I just was hoping you could pass on our, or my compliments to Sean on the new DPW monthly report, or maybe Lisa. It's been beefed up quite a bit, and I think if residents are curious about what's going on at DPW and the many projects that are being undertaken, I think that that is a good place to look. So, thank you for that. Anybody else for Lynn?
I just wanted to ask, just, so regarding the pump station and the diesel-powered bypass pump, do you feel that there's no reason to believe that that won't be adequate for the four weeks that we need? Is there any, there's no reason to think that that's...
It's constantly being monitored.
Okay, thank you.
So, I wouldn't, yeah, we're...
This is the most alarming part of the report, but good job keeping it for the end.
Yes, absolutely.
And I forgot to add, during Select Board comments on the, with the Hampton County Sheriff's Department, I just wanted to say, you know, publicly thank them. They have a lot of different projects going around the whole county, and, you know, over the past few years, they've really helped Long Meadow significantly when it comes to cleanups down at the meadows, as well as now painting, well, painting Blueberry School over the summer a couple of years ago, as well as now the Greenwood Pool. So, that helps save the town a lot of money. It helps, you know, freshen up the poolhouse for, for the youth in the summer camp program. So, I just wanted to thank, publicly thank Sheriff Kochi and Hampton County Sheriff's Department and their employees for all that they continue to do for Long Meadow.
Anything else? Okay, great. We're moving on to presentation, and we have first a middle school building project update. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to update the Select Board and the wider community on the progress we've made on the middle school building project and where we are this summer, the work that's happening over the summer as we prepare for votes on the project's open budget in September. So, introduce a familiar face to you, Mr. Christian Whitsett, one of the principal architects at JWA, part of our design team. And Christian's prepared a slide deck to overview the status of the project and answer any questions you might have, so we appreciate the chance to talk to you about this.
Perfect. Great, thank you. So, we don't want to take a lot of your time tonight. You have a very packed agenda. So, we'll go through this fairly quickly, and I guess certainly, you know, have us pause if you have any questions. We just wanted to provide an overview. We're at the end of schematic design, so kind of bring you up to speed on where we are to date, the process thus far. The benefit of going through the MSBA process is at the end of schematic design, you have a very good idea of construction costs and project costs, so we wanted to present those tonight. And then, we have some exciting news with the MSBA Board, taking a look at it later this week for approval, and then hoping for town votes in September. So, we'll start off with an introduction to the School Billing Committee. I think everyone's pretty familiar with it. Armin with the chair in the committee, Julie with vice chair, and then, of course, Josh and Marty, Lynn and Ian have been at all of our meetings. So, it's in a partnership with the Massachusetts School Billing Authority. Colliers is your owner's project manager, so that they're kind of the go-between between the School Billing Committee, who is the client for the project, and the grant organization with the MSBA. We were hired later, after Colliers was brought on board, for the design team. Behind us, there is a plethora of engineers and consultants. I think there's 25 or 28 on this project, all from security consultants to lighting to acoustics to the structural engineers, et cetera. Josh, yeah?
So, Julie did not run for reelection, so her term has ended, and I know Marty and I may have talked about this, or maybe I talked to Armin. We need to reappoint, the Select Board needs to reappoint somebody, correct? Or does the school committee reappoint somebody?
Well, Julie was the school committee rep. Her term had ended, wasn't, didn't run for reelection, so tomorrow night, the school committee is planning to reappoint a school committee rep to the school building committee.
Right. It's fairly formulaic from the MSBA on who should comprise members of the school billing committee, so having a representative from the school committee is fantastic. Next slide. So, diving into the proposed site plan, we're proposing a consolidated six- to eights middle school at the Williams site. You can faintly see it there, but the existing Williams School is dashed in yellow. North is to our right, so it's on the north end of the site, near Woolworth. The idea is to construct the new school to the south of the existing school on the existing playing fields. Once the students have moved into the new school, then we can demolish the existing school, finish up our site work, and put in a new synthetic turf field. So, just going through some of the highlights on the plan, most, you know, we focus more on traffic and site circulation on this project than I think on most of our school projects. Understandably, it's a concern off of Williams Street and also off of Woolworth. Right now, it's kind of the worst of all worlds. You have a, you know, drop-off lane that's the same as your bus lane, that's the same as a through road, that's the same as a parking lot, all kind of on top of each other with no separation between those. So, we have a separate bus drop-off on this plan with number seven there on the left, on the south side of the site. We have a nice, long queuing lane, both number six and number eight, for parent pickup and drop-off. And then, the parking lots you'll see are isolated from both of those circulation paths. So, much safer for pedestrians, much safer for pickup and drop-off, and also the ability to get all the cars and buses off of Williams and onto the site. We have a new turning lane that we're proposing on Williams Street, so as you're going eastbound towards the high school in Big Y, you'll have a left turn lane, so that should help ease some of the traffic congestion on Williams. We are maintaining a path or a throughway to Woolworth that was actually recommended by basically everyone we talked to, from DPW to residents of Woolworth, which is a bit of, was interesting as we went through the process. As I mentioned, on number one, a new multi-sport synthetic turf field. Stormwater management is integrated into the kind of outdoor classroom space to the west of the proposed school. We have a secure emergency access for fire and ambulance around the entirety of the school, and then a shipping area with a loading dock, which, again, the existing school does not have. Want to go to the next slide? Thank you. These are some, again, initial renders. We are at the end of schematic design. We still have quite a bit of detailed design to go, really figuring out, you know, exactly the, you know, roof-to-wall details, insulation details, but we wanted to bring it to a pretty high level of schematic design so that we can get that very accurate cost estimate at the end of this process. So, down there at the bottom, some quick renderings of the new front entry on the south side of the school, off of Williams, one of the west outdoor areas between the classroom wings, and then the third one over from the left is a view from the north towards the gym. We have most of our communal spaces on the north side of the school. And then, an east entry, that would be access from that parent drop-off zone. I want to keep going to the next slide. Again, please interrupt if I'm going too fast, or you want to ask questions on anything in particular. Some interior perspective shots, and I'll get to the floor plan next, but the gymnasium up on the upper left, we are trying to incorporate some wood-glue lambeams, bring some natural warmth into the palette of the school. Very robust materials in that gym environment. It's actually kind of fire-isolated from the rest of the building, so it makes it easier to do a kind of a different type of construction for that portion of the building. A new multipurpose auditorium on the upper right, basically sized off of what's at Glenbrook right now, but organized a little bit better and a little bit more flexible in its use. Cafeteria on the bottom left, you're kind of looking towards the servery, and then windows out to the outside due west. And then, on the bottom right, is kind of a communal breakout space, academic neighborhood within one of the classroom wings, and we arrived at that with getting a lot of input from students and staff, having some great visioning sessions with the staff, which really, they were super helpful, brought a lot of input to the project, and so that was one of the main design takeaways from that, from that process. Next slide. So, this is a kind of just a axonometric view of the school, just to get a rough idea of how it's laid out. First floor down below, second floor up above. The main entry, again, is from the south with administration right there, front and center, so that they can have eyes on the street and parent drop-off and bus drop-off. The classroom wings are divided by grades, where sixth grade is on the first floor and a little bit more, you know, feeling a little bit more of like an elementary school, where it's a little bit more contained. The science classrooms are on the end of that wing. As you get up into seventh and eighth grade, then there's a bit, you know, more movement, again, transitioning towards the high school. And so, there we have our science labs on the second floor in that bar of green classrooms there. Counseling up above administration. Purple is media and STEM, art, STEM, and then the auditorium just to the north of that. And then, so our thought is that on the north side is really the communal entrance. We want to have this building be used not just for the students and staff, but also be a community resource, so that from the parking, from that synthetic turf field, you can also have access to the gym, the cafeteria, the auditorium, and a few music classrooms up there on the north side. Next slide. Marty, I don't know, do you want to take this one?
Sure. We've appreciated from the get-go the way JWA has really sought to understand our existing program and what we aspire to, and obviously, what we're excited about, the building and the furniture and the fixtures and the equipment, but really, the educational advantages stand out for me, and when I think about this building, I think about the sense of community that it will help us build. It will help us engage the wider community, but the way it's laid out, it will create a sense of community for the students. The wings are designed as small neighborhoods, so current, students are currently in teams of about 100 students per grade at each school, so we'll be able to maintain that team structure with the way the building's designed, so really appreciate that. It's obviously a very safe building, which is incredibly important in 2025. The spaces themselves, the auditorium is reflective of our commitment to the fine and performing arts, and both for drama and music, it's going to be a really special space, and for convening community events, we're really excited about that. I think the, in the sort of bottom right on the first floor, there's an area of the building that, when I think about it, it lends itself to kids creating the types of durable skills that are really critically important nowadays. It's spaces where, in art rooms and in music rooms and in steam classrooms and science labs, kids can research a problem, design solutions, create solutions, and present solutions, and that really is what our vision of the graduate is really trying to emphasize. So, we're really excited about that. And then, I think just the combining the two schools under one roof will create all kinds of advantages. We really believe it will put us in a position to expand elective offerings, expand extracurricular offerings... And then, I think just the combining the two schools under one roof will create all kinds of advantages. We really believe it will put us in a position to expand elective offerings, expand extracurricular offerings, and really create schedules that match the staff, and schedules that match student needs. So, you know, the educational advantages certainly stand out for us, and something we're really excited about, and really appreciate how JWA has been responsive to who we want to be, and what this opportunity will create for our kids for decades to come.
You can keep going. So we have been partnering with the MSBA from the very beginning. It is a grant process, it's very prescribed, how the process works. It did start all the way back in 2022, submitting to the MSBA for eligibility, so it has been a long road to get even to the point where we are. And then you can see, at the end of that timeline, we have planned to move in for fall of 2028. Again, as I mentioned, we wrapped up schematic design, we submitted that to the state on May 1st, and then the state has been reviewing that. We've had some very productive meetings with them in the meantime, and they have recommended the project to their board of directors on June 16th, June 18th, sorry. And then the step after that would be to get the local approval, and that's, of course, scheduled for September. Next slide down. In terms of the project cost, so again, this is the product at the NSC设计that, of course, you know, we're interested in the plans and the renderings and all the materiality that goes into the building, but a lot of folks are, of course, very, you know, focused on the dollars. So on the right is a miniscule version of what really you spent a lot of time with the MSBA going over in great detail. And that's really figuring out what that MSBA maximum total grant is going to be. And you don't really know what that's going to, you have a rough idea, but you don't know until the end of schematic design, and that's why it's very difficult to have the public presentations early on in the process, where everyone wants to know, what's it going to cost for Long Meadow? And we tried to give a range, and, you know, from our past experience, and luckily, we were, you know, right in the ballpark of where it came in. But the construction budget is about $118 million. Soft costs are all included in the, in the total project costs, and included in what the MSBA funds, so that's everything from architecture and engineering fees, OPM fees. For this project, we are going with a construction manager at risk, so that means that we're bringing that contractor on earlier than we would otherwise. We can interview all the contractors and choose the one that you want to work with, which is a great process. And so some, the construction manager fee is in there. FFNE is furniture, fixtures, and equipment, so sometimes we get, you know, we'll get this empty building, but then we have to pay for the furniture. Now that's included in these project costs. And then everything from legal fees to utility fees, everything is included in these project costs. Contingencies, you know, on that spreadsheet on the right, that's at the bottom of it, so you'll get your kind of total project costs, and then want to put some money aside for contingencies, for items that arise during construction, either unforeseen conditions, or also as priorities change within the district, you know, setting some aside, some money aside for that construction process. So the estimated total project budget is just over $150 million. The MSBA maximum grant is about $54 million, so that brings the Long Meadow share down to just over $96 million. I do want to note that these also include off-site improvements, so that turning lane on Williams Street, we're recommending to extend a sidewalk on the south side of Williams Street a little bit to the east, and that's all included within these costs as well.
If I could just note for everyone, we looked at this, this sheet on the right, pretty extensively at an MSBA meeting, and it's really all-encompassing, and it's really detailed. So if anyone wants to go back and look at it, is this the one where the two different cost estimators?
Yeah. That helped arrive at that construction budget?
Yeah, so we have a pretty good idea that this is what it will cost. We had two independent companies look at it, and they came, they arrived very close to each other, so I think we can feel confident presenting this number to our town.
It's a very robust process. So just focusing a little bit on schedule coming up, so again, a town, special town meeting on September 9th, and then a vote on September 30th. And if both of those are positive, then we'll immediately go into design development. That's from about October to February. We do another submission to the MSBA, another cost estimate. That's a chance for us to check in, make sure that we're still tracking with the cost estimates that we had at schematic design. All of that goes to the state, it will also go to, you know, to Long Meadow, so you can review that as well. Then we go into construction documents. Again, there's a check-in at 60% construction documents, another check-in at 90% construction documents, and then we're done with the entire bid set in September of 2026. Again, because we've elected to go with a construction manager at risk, we're actually able to start some amounts of construction before that bid set is complete. It's another huge advantage of going with that system. So we are hoping, you know, we'll learn more as we're interviewing the CM firms and see what they propose, but we do anticipate that construction could start that summer of 2026, giving them kind of a head start, able to do some of the site work when the site's not being used. So a huge benefit while we're still wrapping up those final 100% bid set drawings. And I think that's it. Thank you for the time. I hope that wasn't too fast. And any questions?
Good.
Yeah. Thank you so much for the presentation. So actually, my dad was an architect who actually designed schools in the Chicago area, so I'm very appreciative of this process. And in, you know, this, in thinking about this process, and obviously consolidating two middle schools into one, was something that's come up in our community, was just kind of a loss of a, who was on the school committee for a long time, and I talked about, because he, when he was on the school committee, Ludlow kind of made similar, had similar plans with elementary schools and consolidating them, was how you can actually create community by the design of a school. And it's really, I think, great for me to see the amount of thought and the amount of focus that went into that in these designs, and that is just something that I just wanted to kind of, you know, give kudos to you all for, and really recognizing that this was something that the community was worried about or thinking about, and you guys took the steps to address that. So I wanted to thank you all for that. And then, you know, there might not be an answer to this, but, you know, aside from the votes that the town has to take in September, what do you foresee as, you know, the remaining large obstacle left? Maybe something that keeps you up at night, or something that we should be aware of and kind of looking out for as, you know, as maybe the biggest hurdle left, or the biggest obstacle left?
Yeah. I mean, to be honest, nothing comes to mind, luckily, that's the great news. It's a, it's a long process. I mean, I think showing that slide of, you know, when it started to, when construction, that's six years, maybe? And so I think in some ways, that's the biggest hurdle, it's just that, you know, it's very prescribed, and so some people think that it should happen a lot faster, but I think the benefit of that is that it forces you to do your homework. We've already had geotechnical explorations on the site, you know, we've done a hazardous materials assessment of both existing schools, so none of that has raised any red flags for us. Certainly, items will come up, right? There'll be delays in construction, or, you know, and I think that's why that contingency exists, and that's also been baked into the schedule a little bit. So Colliers has done a good job of, you know, foreseeing those potential issues in the future. I think for the most part, having the community involved is always a fantastic thing, and we did have a community meeting in April at Williams, and that was super well-attended and great to get feedback. We divided it, we did it a little differently with individual tables, and it seemed like folks felt very comfortable coming up and talking about specific issues, which was great. So, yeah, so far it's been going great.
I think I'd add in the plan for furniture, fixtures, and equipment in all the spaces. I think that that'll be something that we'll continue to engage the staff on. And then really just sort of implementing the education plan that we laid out to the MSBA, and bringing together two staffs with a singular ed plan, and a new program, perhaps a new schedule. So thankfully, we have a long runway in front of us to get that done before we enter a new school, hopefully in the fall of '28.
Great, thank you.
As someone who's seen this every step of the way, it is still kind of stunning to look up there and see everything. There's been a lot of work done, and I think that it's evolved a lot since the process started, and it's been a great team working on it, and so thank you for coming in, and we really appreciate you getting an update. I hope people are watching, and if they have questions, Middle School Building Committee meets generally once a month, but I know Armin definitely answers emails, and so does Marty, so you can definitely bug them. But yeah, thank you very much. Anything else from the board?
I'll just add, you know, I appreciate all the work you were doing. Josh has been on this committee, and I've been following it kind of peripherally and every step of the way, I've always been very impressed by how transparent and thought-out this whole process is. I mean, it's mind-boggling, to be honest. I mean, it's a major project, we haven't put a shovel in the ground yet, but it, the foundation, so to speak, has been laid for a very successful project, I think, and that's a commendation to you guys and the whole town, frankly, for giving me that.
It's been, it's been a community effort, and, you know, the Select Board, the school committee, the building committee, town officials, town manager's office, everybody is pointed in the same direction on this project, so that's really encouraging. That doesn't happen by accident, and many communities don't have that experience with a building project, so we're really grateful.
I would just say also on the traffic concerns, because that's something that has come up a lot, and I attended the event at Williams with a lot of the folks that live in that area, so it sounds like you're pretty confident that there won't be traffic issues based on the new design, because I know that that's always something that comes up.
Yeah, I mean, so we had a meeting recently that included DPW, fire, police, town manager's office, our design team, school administrators, all in one room over at the, over at the town offices, and there was a lot of great brainstorming, shared understandings. You know, I think the reality is, we have schools that are in thickly settled neighborhoods, and I don't want to say that there won't be traffic, because we have six schools where there currently is traffic at arrival and dismissal, so I kind of want to manage expectations, but I think we've designed a campus that can take the traffic off the street and do it safely and efficiently.
And the other thought is, moving forward, once we have a school built, is obviously kids are coming from different parts of town, traveling, and we want to make sure that they have a safe commute to school, so I, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I assume that we're working with folks to understand new routes to school, and, and the impact that it might be from a public safety perspective.
Yeah, I think as Christian pointed out, the, the amount of design work that has gone into creating a safe campus, and then looking at the surrounding area, has been significant, and there's some, even some consideration of some additional sidewalks that could be incorporated into the project, just to, again, get kids to school and get them off-campus safely.
The last one is the turf fields, that's really interesting. Someone like myself, I'm, you know, I'm a coach in town and played a lot of sports growing up here. Is that part of the reimbursement with that school building?
It's, it's not reimbursable, but you'd speak probably more.
Sure. I don't want to get in trouble now, people are probably going to be upset.
It gets very complicated, but the MSBA caps site costs at a certain percentage of your construction costs.
Gotcha.
And so every project goes over that cap, so the synthetic turf field is above that cap, but I think even if you did a grass field, it would be over that cap. And that was not a decision that was arrived at lightly, but once, again, we met with community members a lot, and a lot of coaches and athletic groups, and once we realized the amount of use that was desired on that field, we had a great presentation from our civil engineer and landscape architect team, and they just said, it just won't work as a natural grass, you know, it will turn into mud almost immediately.
Take a look at it right now.
Exactly. So.
Not to mention the important point that you have many more fields, much, much greater field space now, now you're going to be shrinking it, and so it's absolutely going to be used much more, right?
And so how can it be, you know, used by the most number of people possible, and the most sports? And there's been talk about field hockey, and football, and lacrosse, and so, you know, making sure that we can accommodate all of those, which is more than what I think the existing fields do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Good night.
All right. Next up, we have Fussin' O'Neill on the MVP Outreach and Engagement Presentation.
Should I wait?
No offense, no. No, you can go ahead.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come and give you all an update on the Cooley Brook MVP project that we've been working on over the past two years. My name is Andy Bone, I am a landscape architect and director of landscape architecture with Fussin' O'Neill. This has been a really incredible project for us to work on with the community as a whole. It's very much based in the community design practice of really making sure that this is something that is embedded into the community and the desires of the community moving forward. So I'll give you a broad overview, but a quick snapshot is we're about 60% through the process of eventually getting to some construction-ready design documents, but generally, the project is looking at the entirety of Cooley Brook and its watershed, and what can be done to improve the water quality that's going through Cooley Brook, and ultimately ending up in the Connecticut River. But you can probably just, there's a lot of slides, but there's a lot of graphics. I promise I will be brief, but I'm happy to pause if there's any questions. We've done an immense amount of assessment work, looking at how the watershed performs and functions. We've looked at, we've done erosion studies, we've assessed the sediment, we've looked at where the sediment's accumulating, well, we've understood the hydrology associated with this site, and comprehensive delineation, the forested areas, really looking at the entirety of the watershed, and you can keep kind of scrolling through, but one of the things that's really fascinating about this project is that a majority of the watershed is underground, and it doesn't actually daylight until it comes out in Bliss Park, goes underneath Laurel Street into Laurel Park. And if you keep scrolling through, there's some maps here. We've done a deep dive into the site history, really understanding how the site has been used historically over time, which has been fascinating, and it's something that we really are looking to integrate into any of the restoration projects, is really telling that story of how this site has been used historically. Originally, it had an Olmstedian design, before that, it was the Waterworks Site, this is where the town of Long Meadow got their public water drinking supply from, until it moved to Springfield. The Olmsted design is a really interesting component to this, but it's actually not the most important history of it, so some of the shaping was done from the, from the Olmsted Plan, but there was a good portion of it that was, that was not enacted. But a really interesting idea and concept, so we've kind of taken that and helped with some of the storytelling that came through with the community, and their desire to explore how this site could be used for not only this generation, but the next generation to come. So this is a good map to depict the watershed, so all the red areas are impervious areas that all drain into Cooley Brook, and it's a pretty significant amount of impervious area, so all of that gets into our traditional stormwater system, curb, gutter, catch basin, pipes, and then straight into Cooley Brook. So it's not really functioning like a natural ecosystem, so everything that we're looking to do and possible improvements are trying to use nature-based solutions to help bring that back as much as possible. But as you can imagine, during a big rain event, it is extremely flashy, so as soon as that water gets into the pipe system, there's no natural sponges to kind of hold that water back. It is literally coming out of the pipe with all the stuff that's on the ground, and going in through the system, so that, that causes problems. It's not, it's not a healthy ecosystem for, for a number of reasons, and this is one of them. Some of the directional arrows here in the blue just show where these different inputs are coming from, is some subwatersheds, and so we've really started to kind of hone in and focus on not just the park and the restoration of the Cooley Brook itself, but also what opportunities are there in the upper watershed to help slow that water down, capture the water, infiltrate the water. Long Meadow has this really awesome resource, which is an immense amount of sand, so infiltration opportunities are immense. It's just a matter of, are there opportunities that we can help? Longmeadow has this really awesome resource, which is an immense amount of sand. So infiltration opportunities are immense. It's just a matter of are there opportunities that we can help kind of capture that water and promote that infiltration before it comes out of the pipe? So this is a good diagram of just the, the pipe network and how it all functions and moves through the system. And ultimately, daylighting into Cooley Brook. You can keep scrolling down. We understand there, you know, we, we wanted to make sure we were building on the prior work that's been done at Cooley Brook. I know this has been talked about in the community for, for a number of years. There's a lot of work done by the Conway School that we're building off of, a lot of assessment work that we're building off of. So really making sure that we're not starting, we didn't start at zero. We really wanted to make sure we understood how that, how that all played into the system. You can keep scrolling. So some of the field observations, we've done a hydrographic and topographic survey. And really, the MVP project is looking at doing everything it can, a community can do to help improve this water quality and this natural system. There's two impoundments in Laurel Park. One is higher up in the site that actually has a pond above it. And then there's a second one further downstream that's really degraded and is kind of the remnant of the old Waterworks Site and is kind of dilapidated, broken down, not really functioning, other than causing more erosion and being a hindrance to the system. Yeah, you can keep scrolling. Yep. One of the important things that we've done is really looking at water quality. So we've, we've been testing the water quality in the system. We do it during dry weather events and then we do a wet, wet weather event so we can understand like what that water quality looks like in those different areas. We've also tested the sediment in the system. And that sediment testing has, has pinged a couple hotspots for contamination. So understanding what those contaminants are and how they'll be handled, how they'll be removed from the site is critical and kind of in our next steps of the project moving forward. They're in the areas where you would expect them to be, which is just above the impoundment. So this is where those really good thing, I'm being sarcastic, where those heavy metals tend to kind of get stuck and, and fall out. So, you know, that's one of the things with dams is that they, they kind of inhibit the, the ability of a stream to work the way it wants to work. So they, they let the water move over the top, but they hold all the sediment back. So you actually have a very sediment-starved system downstream because none of that sediment's allowed to kind of get through the system anymore. It is a good thing to be able to at least isolate where these pockets of contaminants are. So we know and we'll be able to hone in exactly where they are to make sure that they're handled and removed properly. The archaeological assessment that was completed was pretty, pretty fascinating to really dig into it, to understand from pre-contact uses of the site to colonial uses of the site, to its, its development over time. And that, that information and that assessment will have to continue because it is a site that has a lot of history to it. So understanding where any of these improvements are and the ground disturbances associated with some of these improvements, you really want to be careful about, you know, disturbing any of those, any of those artifacts. As I mentioned, this is just a diagram we used. We did a workshop with the community over the course of three and a half days to really work with them to give, give the community access to designers. So this is, I, I've fallen in love with Longmeadow, but I don't live here. So this is, this is a park, this is an asset for your community. So we really like to kind of come in and, you know, Lynn will tell you, like, we literally lived here for, for three and a half days and just opened our doors at any moment. We invited the public in for public walking tours, for just looking over our shoulders as we're thinking through different ideas, letting people give us feedback of like, hey, can you explore this? Let's look and see what that can do. And ultimately come up with a, a, a design solutions that are really embedded in the community and what the community is looking for moving forward. So this goes through kind of that exploration. We did a, a walking survey. So we set up different spots along, along the trails in Laurel Park and, and had QR codes. So people could scan a QR code and then look through their phone at like what some potential improvements might look like at the point they're standing. So they could use that as almost like a little bit of a virtual reality. And then answer questions, you know, what do you like? What don't you like? What would you like to see more of? Because, you know, we're trying to use as many different ways to engage the community so that they, we can get really good and meaningful feedback. We did get a decent amount of feedback. We got a lot of participants online. We got participants handing us just paper copies back in from the survey. Really good and meaningful priorities were identified. Ultimately, the, the highest priority was we have to do something to improve the water quality in Cooley Brook. That was the number one hierarchy of, of what came out. Accessible trails was another big component to that. And, and not just an accessible trail that was getting you to one spot. It was really clear that folks wanted a meaningful experience that kind of worked its way around the park. It could be explored in different ways. So how does that work into the system? Invasive species, you have an arboretum of invasive species out there. So that was one thing that was something that, that really came up as, as being a high priority. The other piece of it was, you know, we, we tend to, to, to really try to evoke a little bit of emotion with how we do some of the renderings because we want people to give us feedback. And one of the things that came up and was very clear was, you know, that this was much a very important asset, but the rustic nature of the park was very important to people. So ensuring that that was something that was kept and could be utilized moving forward was something that, that was one of the priorities as well. So I mentioned, this is our look, listen, conceptualize, and then really create. So using this process to really engage the community in the process was really an awesome experience. You can just scroll through these. So some of the design recommendations that came up as we're starting to think through this, it was interesting to hear about the, the potential for the clay courts to be turned into pickleball courts. You know, this is a park now that I've spent a lot of time in, so I'm really starting to understand the programmatic events and how it functions, some of the problems with how it functions too, and where there might be some opportunities to help Cooley Brook's overall health in the system. So we looked at an opportunity along Bliss Road to create kind of an open, by daylighting the stream and creating like an open wetland area so that we could daylight that Cooley Brook further, or further, further up towards Bliss Road, but create a series of boardwalks that move through that. So that would give the opportunity for that water to move through a natural ecosystem that would kind of weather the storm of the, the, you know, the hot sediment laden water coming out of the pipe and really looking at opportunities to cool that down and move it through the system, but through, through a, a created wetland system. And then also to the ballfields to the left there, looking at is there an opportunity to do subsurface infiltration underneath the ballfields? The ballfields themselves are in need of renovation. They're well-loved by the community, well-used by the community. So they're, they're kind of at the point where they're ready for an upgrade. But what is, you know, what things can be integrated into that at the same time to help the overall water quality of Cooley Brook? The restoration of Cooley Brook is significant with it, as I mentioned, some of the erosion that's happening as it moves underneath Laurel Street and then down through Laurel Park. The two impoundments, it came, we explored both rebuilding an impounded structure, rebuilding a dam, and also the removal of a dam and what would that look like and how would that function? Go to the next ones. So this is kind of a zoom in of that area of Bliss Park and, and looking at an opportunity of creating kind of this public amenity space, boardwalk system that works its way over the top of this created wetland. You know, pulling the parking that's along that access road out closer to the street and utilizing some subsurface infiltration underneath the, you know, a resurfaced ballfield. You can go to the next one. And then moving down through Laurel Park, you know, really looking at how that park functions today. And is there opportunities to pull the parking away from the, the system? Right now, that, that parking area, the cul-de-sac that's in there now is really close to that water body. So trying to get vehicular movements as far away from that natural ecosystem as possible and also allowing that space to be better utilized for the general public. So right now, you're kind of giving away a lot of that really great real estate to the car where that should be part of the public park. So that was something that came up in that process as well. So we looked at it in the ponded system. But we also wanted to have a very meaningful conversation about, you know, if it go back to a ponded system and you go to a restored ponded system to make a really high-functioning, high-value pond, that's going to take maintenance. There's also a dam reconstruction that's going to take maintenance. And the buildup of sediment over time, you will have to go through a dredging process based on how much sediment is in the system. That's probably between seven and 10 years realistically, where the entire pond would need to be drained and dredged. So wanting to have that conversation was a really important part of that. Looking at it in more of a riverine system and what would that look like? Understanding that there's also an opportunity to maybe have a little bit of both. So we could potentially keep the, the ponded area that is the pond today perched and elevated. And there's a couple of graphics that I'll show you of how that works during a high rain event. It would actually turn back into a pond, but then slowly release over time to really help manage that as we're looking at, you know, much more increase in our rainfall events and intensity and in, in volumes. So looking at these in cross-sections as well, you can keep scrolling. So really looking at, you know, how, you know, if you go to a, a stream system, how do you still provide access to it? People still want to touch the water and get down to the water. So, you know, looking at ways to utilize some of the stone that's used in the dam today and creating some stepping stone areas that get down to the edge of the water and still allowing that sense of exploration and kind of being able to get down and touch the system and play in the system is something that we really wanted to explore. So here's some 3D modeling that we did to look at how some of these different ideas could, could play out that we used through the workshop process. You can keep scrolling through these. You can keep going. So these are some of the get downs that we're talking about, utilizing some of the stone that's in the existing dams today. Reorganizing that stone in a way that, that allows it to function. But looking at these, these, the universally accessible walkway. And, and we really kind of studied the contouring and the ground to understand that there is an opportunity. You can just pause right there for one second. There is an opportunity here to really create almost like a figure eight through the entire park system that would allow for a really diverse user experience for all levels, for all users. And there's an opportunity there that, you know, depending on what time of day you go, what time of year you go, it will look different. It will feel different. When it lasts rain, how, you know, every time, there'll be something different and unique about it. And that figure eight really kind of gives people access to spots that they may not necessarily have access to. So this is showing, in this top, top image shows how a natural stream system during a high-water event could function and pond up still. But then I think it's the next one down. It might be to the top. Sorry, we might have passed it. It's the one above this. There you go. So that was what it would look like in its natural stream system. And then as you scroll down after a large rain event and how it could pond up and kind of help hold that water back, some, so kind of reducing the flashiness of the system in general. Kind of moving through the different trails and how they work through the site. One of the things now is it's, it's such a love site that just the tread of foot through some of these pretty sensitive areas become very challenging and overcompacted, excessive erosion. So there are opportunities to do that. Creating some overlooks in different areas where the, the trail kind of meanders off the main, the main, the main route now and opportunities for that, that expansion. You can keep scrolling through. We've done extensive amount of soil testing. One of the things that has come up is we wanted to understand where the groundwater is in the areas where we're looking at doing some of these potential improvements. Under the ballfield, it's about eight feet below the surface of the grass today. So that gives us plenty of volume to do some subsurface infiltration. The problem is, is all the infrastructure that's in the road is really low. It's about seven feet deep. So that actually only gives us about a foot of area to do any infiltration, which isn't the volume we're looking for. But in discussions with the town and some of the folks on our staff, looking at some of the potential improvements to the stormwater system along, along the streets, there may be opportunities to help elevate that, that piping system, allowing us for a little bit more of a horizon to promote infiltration. As I mentioned, we're doing, we're, we just finished up some of the stormwater reconnaissance in the upper watershed, looking at any opportunity to help hold that water back instead of it going straight to the curb into Catch Basin and out into the pipe. Looking at opportunities to really hold that water back, promote the infiltration, at least slow that down before it comes out of the pipe. You can scroll through these. So we looked at a variety of areas in the upper watershed. School around Blueberry Hill. You can keep going. And just some different ideas that can be thought of as different improvements are happening. You know, this is where you really, every, every little nook and cranny counts. All the tree lawns can be very helpful at promoting this and really helping improve the water quality. So some of them are right around the high school that we looked at. And then some over by Blueberry Hill School and some of the intersections. So there's the co-benefits of helping narrow down some of the intersections and opportunities to provide good infrastructure. Cul-de-sacs are always a really good example of an opportunity to depress the center of the cul-de-sac instead of elevating it, letting all the water kind of come into the center of the cul-de-sac. And this is where we are today. So we've just finished up the permit level design for the restoration of everything in Laurel Park. The upper portion of the park in Bliss is on hold for the time being until we get a little bit more information and hopefully move forward in the next round of MVP grant funding. We have, the goal of the project was the water quality, but from our side, you know, we wanted to make sure that the town had every opportunity. So looking at the grant funding opportunities for this, it's not going to be a one bucket for every potential improvement. So we really wanted to kind of break down the costs of the project so that we could kind of line it up for different grant funding opportunities. So you'll see the bigger number at the bottom. And I recognize that the school project is a different kind of number, but it's still a big number. So really looking at, you know, what are the different components or buckets that we can choose from and highlight different grant funding opportunities? Behind all of these numbers is an extensive deep dive cost estimate in there. But really looking at, at ways that we can tee this up moving forward. So where we are today is we have gone through and applied for the next round of MVP grant funding. That was done, the application was submitted in, I want to say, yeah.
Early May.
Early May. It was an intense time, but we got it in. And, you know, that's really looking to get the entirety of the project from where it is today through a construction bid-ready project so that then we can really identify and go after the different funding opportunities that are out there for implementation. You know, MVP is an awesome program. They do an incredible amount of, of work, letting everyone zoom out. When it comes to implementation, they want to see their money go to something that's constructed. So they are the biggest true leaders for the project, which is fantastic. But wanting to make sure that if there's any ancillary projects, we can identify that there's additional funding, excuse me, and grant opportunities for those different projects. So in this next round, our ask from MVP was for additional historical landscape and cultural assessment to really hone in on the refined sediment sampling. So we, as I mentioned, we got those two hotspots, but we really want to now circle them in so we can understand the depth and the spread of exactly how far they are. Permitting, construction documents. There's still an immense amount of public engagement that we've, we've lined up with the schools and the scout troops. And then public participation in general moving forward. So I was a little bit long-winded, but I think it's a good broad overview and I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes.
So I live around the corner from here. I'd spend, especially over COVID with my kids, I spent a lot of time in here. I had no idea this was going on, putting my feet. So I, I found this pretty fascinating. So thank you for that.
Awesome.
Just, you know, if I could snap my fingers and do this, absolutely.
Sure.
That's a lot of money. So for the grant opportunities, just looking, best case scenario, are there? are there, do funding timelines need to match up? I know with a lot of them, they're time limited, or you have to do it within X days, or you're going to apply. And do we need to have things fall into place like that? Can they fall into place where everything, the money can all come in at once? And then the second part of that is, best case scenario, what kind of funding is there out there for us? If this is something we wanted to take on?
Sure. Both great questions. Ideally, you want the funding to line up as much as you can. A lot of the funding mechanisms, they allow for some flexibility in the timing of those. We'd really be looking for some federal opportunities for grant funding as well as state, because then they can take care of each other as far as match goes from the state level of using federal funds. So that would be an awesome opportunity. So really looking at every, every possible scenario that we can kind of pair these things together. With the ecological enhancement, just the restoration of Cooley Brook itself, there'll be significant amount of machine work associated with that. So, you know, improvements to the parking area, those could all be picked together. But, you know, if it's, if it's like the ADA trail, there's different park applications and grant opportunities for work like that, that we certainly would be looking at if it doesn't fall under the bucket or if it's not enough under the MVP grant, for example. So, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's a little bit of like the careful orchestration. But as we go through this next year, that's where we'll really start to fine tune that. And we're really teeing these projects up for, people are, granting agencies are much more likely to fund a project that's construction ready and has community involvement and approval to move forward. So implementation funds are much more accessible in that capacity. So even if it's not funded all entirely by MVP, there may be a different, a different grant opportunity that we can kind of pair them together. The funding opportunities in general, MVP is a commitment from the state that will not go away. But we're in a tricky funding mechanism right now. So understanding where those dollars come from, how far they'll go, will be something that we'll all have to kind of keep our eye out. But what we're seeing right now is that there's still plenty of opportunity for grant funding out there.
Yeah, thank you so much for this presentation. You mentioned that in creating these images, you try to evoke emotion and, you know, looking at these images and what this could look like. This would be transformational for our town. This would be, you know, just an incredible, you know, something new for our town to enjoy and that is just already there and that we can utilize. So in the next steps that you outlined, can you give us an idea of how long those next steps are and then kind of what the next steps are after those?
Sure.
Next steps?
Yeah. So the next, if we get approval and we get chosen to move forward with MVP, that will, we'll get a notification in probably end of August. And that will run through June 30th of 2026 to get all the way through permitting and get construction bid ready. In that next, in this fiscal year, we'll be looking for opportunities for implementation funds. So it could be as soon as 20, summer 2026, there's parts of the project that are ready to go. But if we have to pause to wait for additional grant funding opportunities based on their fiscal cycle, it may be a year later. But we're, we'll be teed up and ready.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just to, this is, we're roughly five years into looking at Bliss and Laurel Parks. And it started with actually a citizen group that submitted a CPA application. The entire history of all of this, all the phases is available on the town website. It's broken out by phase one, phase two, and then where we are right now, which is finishing up phase two. So there's a lot that Andrew tried to capture tonight, but I just want to reflect on, this really started back in 2020 with a community group applying to CPA and getting funding to move forward with a kind of a vision of Bliss and Laurel Parks through a design from the Conway School. Just if you wanted to go back and look, it's pretty helpful to see where we are, or where we were to where we are now.
So a grant session closes out end of this month. When would we expect to hear from you again?
We expect to hear from MVP in August. You would expect to hear from us probably starting in November, December about, we'd be applying for, you know, Conservation Commission, NOI, going through planning board, coming back and presenting to you all about, you know, the project and how it's looking and shaping up moving forward, so that we can kind of get all those things kind of in place and be ready by the end of the fiscal year.
So when would the money aspect start coming in?
Well, we would be, we would start looking at grant opportunities as soon as possible. It depends on the deliverables in the grant. So if we could apply for some, if they have a multi-fiscal year reporting mechanism where we could show that we're making efforts to it, but we'll continue to look. We kind of have a good idea when a lot of these state grants open up. But as Andrew was pointing out, there's, you know, the ADA component of it, there's grants there, there's a park grant, there's MVP that we could, we'll certainly try for. There's some other federal ones that hopefully will still exist that we'll be able to apply for. So we're going to try to patchwork the whole thing together and see what we can do.
The whole thing as in funded all the grants?
Ideally, yeah. I mean, if we could.
Okay. Yeah, I asked, like Vinit said, it's absolutely gorgeous. It would be amazing to have that in our town and in such a prominent place. But that's, that's a lot of money. We got, we don't, we have a tight budget. So, yeah, whatever we can do, I think that, I think it's great.
Yeah. The other thing I'll mention too is there's, the matches also can be in-kind match too. So if there's opportunities for certain parts of the projects to be implemented by the town, whether it be with EPW, I know that they have a full plate already. But there's creative ways to think through how that match can, can come into play.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think the aesthetics and the look and feel of it are phenomenal, but the component of dealing with the stormwater and improving water quality is equally as important. And I think the fact that you can marry both in this is really a win-win for the town.
There we go.
Just gonna say, it's fair to say we're probably not going to have a fishing derby like we used to back in the 90s.
Oh, it's funny that you mentioned this. So one of my colleagues, her husband grew up in town and he's a landscape architect as well. And the first thing he's like, you're taking away my fishing derby? I was like, it's not on me.
A great event though. It really was. And people came out and fought. It was great.
So the, the not so great piece of that is actually the Parks and Rec Department has tried to do it over the years and the water quality is so poor that we're not actually able to stock the pond.
Definitely not eating fish from there.
No, no, definitely not eating. And yeah, the lifespan of a fish would be very short at this point.
Oh, jeez. Okay. Well, fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Josh, we just lost internet.
Lost our Wi-Fi.
Zoom cut out.
Oh, yeah. Interesting.
Is that happening?
No, not.
Wow.
No.
It's still working online.
Oh.
All right. Let's, if you want to continue, we'll troubleshoot and get the Zoom back up.
Moving on to old business, approval meeting minutes. I want to entertain a motion to approve the June 2nd, 2025 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Just a few, just minor, minor edits. I had grammatical things I had Peggy edit. That's all.
Okay. So incorporating those edits. All right. Any, all those in favor? I'm out of practice. Entertained a motion to approve the June 5th, 2025 Remote Select Board Special Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Anything further? And all those in favor? Okay. Moving on to the July 15th, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant. So Lynn, we've opened the warrant as of our last special meeting. So are we now voting on just placing these articles on the warrant?
Yes, and then closing it.
Okay.
So there's, it's broken out into two articles. Town Council has made that recommendation. They have vetted this. It is exactly as you saw it last week. First one is to change the charter and then the second are the accompanying bylaw changes.
Okay. Do we have any motions?
I just had one question. So it, I'm not finding it right now, but I believe it says that once the board is, you know, converted to an appointed board, that the, that they have to remain in that position, I guess for like 30 days until, like the appointment could be changed or anything?
It's, so the language that you're referring to, it says the term of any previously elected planning board member shall cease 30 days after the effective date of this section.
Yeah.
And planning board members shall then initially be appointed in staggered terms so that two members are appointed for three years, two members through, yeah, two members, two members for two years and one member for one year. That is so that there's some continuity of business while the appointment mechanism happens. We can look at changing that amount of time if you would like. I could talk with town council about why they suggested 30 days.
I think that makes sense. So they would have another meeting. But is, Vinit, are you wondering about terminating an appointment?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's kind of where, yeah, where I'm getting to. So basically, I just, just because I just want to make sure that folks are clear about the timeline and how this would work and also just for us as well. So, you know, this goes to Special Town Meeting, AG's office says that the charter change, you know, is approved. It goes to the ballot question on September 30th. So according to the way that's written right now, the elected term of the planning board would continue on for another 30 days past September 30th. And then at that point, they become appointed?
Is that because we need, there would be needed, time needed to actually appoint the people before, to come for the select board during that month? Do you think that was the thinking?
I'm not, I don't know exactly what, I mean, it does, I think, make some sense to me that, that there is some time after the vote for the elected, for the elected positions to remain. But I just kind of want, just want to clarify on that. So just we kind of knew, you know, what this would mean in terms of rescinding appointments and when that could take place.
Yeah. And I can, I can have that timeline for you, but I do believe in reading this now, it will allow you to accept applications for appointment. In this, it's not saying that all of those people would automatically be appointed. But I can, I can get clarity on that.
I know when we first talked about it, it was, oh, they would just become appointed. But it doesn't, you have to have some action of appointing. So, yeah, I think that that's a fair question. If we want to, obviously this came about because of the controversies over Mr. Gunn. If the goal is to, one of the goals is to be able to remove him, we couldn't serve language that says, shall cease 30 days unless sooner terminated by the plan, select board, if we want to.
The way I read this was, you know, you can't just have all of the people just be appointed because some of them have to be assigned to different years, like terms, right?
Right, right.
So that, I thought that, I thought that after the vote, the ballot vote, then we, at the next select board meeting, which would probably happen a couple of weeks after there, whenever it is, then there would be time for people to apply. And then we would be selecting, I mean, it may be the same people, it might not, but everyone would have to be assigned a certain period of time.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I agree with you on that. I'm just talking about the 30 days. Yeah, I think that, that is how I envisioned as well. And we, if we want, we could, or I guess if somebody doesn't want to get back on, they could not apply. But if somebody just got elected for their, well, actually, it wouldn't line up with anybody anyway.
Is it longer or shorter than, why isn't it shorter than 30 days or why isn't it longer than 30 days?
Well, I think it's 30 days to, I think Lynn is probably correct that it's to give some continuity so they can have another meeting, especially if they have a public hearing scheduled already, they have to have that. And if we don't have time, then there will be an issue. But, so I think 30 days makes sense, although some public hearing, hearings are set even further out. I think they might be 45 days, you know, Mike?
No, they, I can check. They have a pretty detailed schedule on their webpage that lists out like when applications need to be in for same design reviews and when.
I'm thinking of other boards.
Yeah. It is 14 day hearing notice posting requirements in some cases, but I can confirm that actually.
So in a vacuum, it makes sense. And I just wonder if, does this give us enough flexibility if we want to take immediate action to terminate an appointment, but they're not appointed at that point? They're still elected for 30 days.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I think the 30 days, for all the reasons we've talked about, makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that we understood, understood and knew when we could take action and what needs to be done.
Yeah. And I think you'd want to also do a full slate, not just one, one appointment here and then you'll get to another one at one point. Like 30 days, the elected planning board does not exist anymore. So you would need to have a full slate so that they could actually meet and conduct business.
And this would give us two meetings in October, basically, to make sure that this is all in place.
So the hearing requirements are within 14, 14 days prior? I think you're referring to zoning board.
I think so.
Yeah. And I think also just the fact that this has been vetted by our council already. I'm also just kind of hesitant to touch any of the wording right now.
Yeah. Okay.
Especially since we don't have another meeting and before the special town meeting.
All right. Entertained a motion to place Article 1 onto the July 15th Special Town Meeting Ballot.
So moved.
Second.
I have some further discussion. I genuinely do not, you know, speaking of vacuum, I don't know if this is the best thing for the town to have, to change from elected to appointed. There's a lot of thinking I have not done on it. We haven't had a lot of people, we haven't had discussions about it. And Lynn pulled together a spreadsheet showing that what's elected, what's appointed, and the towns, it's pretty mixed. That being said, I don't, the people have spoken. And I think that it's really important to do this, to take action, because we are otherwise stuck. There's, we've done every action we can. I think public pressure is there, but there is someone on the planning board that our residents do not want to be on there. And so I think, in a practical sense, we have to do this. And if it's good in the long term, I don't know. But in the circumstances, you have, sometimes you have to take action. And I think that that's what we're doing. So I think that this is an important thing. It's a shame that we have to have a special town meeting in order to, to do this, but we have to. So that's, that's my piece on this. Anything further?
I totally understand, share your, you know, uncertainty about what, if we personally, individually think it's a good move or a bad move, or if it's too much of a reaction to this incident, or if it's just, it's something that we should only do if it's good for the town in general for the long term. But the point is, when I think of it, is it's not up to us to decide. We are giving the town an opportunity to decide, and that's what's going to happen. There will be people there who are in favor of it, people who are against it, and then the town will decide. And that's what we're trying to do.
Well, with Andrew.
Yeah. I mean, the, maybe to Josh's point, I mean, Mr. Gunn can, he can just resign too. I mean, he can actually come forward and resign. I mean, I watched the last planning board meeting, and he said, I'm going to let this fizzle out. I don't know if that was his exact words, but he's not, he said he's not going to run for reelection if there's even, can be an election because of the changes that we're trying to make here. But ultimately, this is on one person and his name is Walter Gunn, and he refuses to resign. So we have to take this measure. It's unfortunate. There's no other measure that we could take currently. So it's, ultimately, it's up to Mr. Gunn to resign. And I don't know how many people have asked and suggested that he do so. He has friends in the town. I'm not sure who's telling him what or to not resign, but I mean, it's extremely but, I mean, it's extremely selfish of Mr. Gunn to not resign, and now it's forcing us to have special, multiple special meetings, spend taxpayer dollars to remove Mr. Gunn, and he can simply resign on his own and avoid this. So whether or not we want to do an appointment, or have an election for a planning board moving forward, it comes down to one person, and it's Mr. Gunn, and he must resign. It's as simple as that. Thanks.
All right, there's nothing further? All those in favor? Okay, and moving on to Article Two, entertain a motion to place Article Two onto the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five special town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and any further discussion? I just had a question, Lynn, number twenty-two, three.
E.
E, yeah, is that, that has not changed, is it?
It is cleaning up the language in the bylaw. Town council flagged this, and because we were already amending this section, he took the opportunity to fix an inconsistency that should have been caught when we did the E-code update.
And it was caught for the charter, so it was updated in twenty twenty-two for the charter, but it was not updated, that same language in the bylaw.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was just the.
We had the same question.
The E, wasn't the, yeah, okay. And, but we can't have one, if there's three members, oh, three members should be elected to terms of five years, so that arrange that each, as you know, there's possible one term shall expire each year, which I guess we can't do unless we line it up with the select board member and the Commonwealth, but I suppose that doesn't really matter. Okay, anything else on?
I could talk, so right now, the appointment for the person of the Commonwealth is altering those other years, and there is no select board appointed applicant right now because we didn't receive any applicants for it, or opposed to that.
It's been a while since we've had one, if I remember correctly, yeah, okay. All right, anything further on Article Two? Okay, all those in favor? All right, and I will entertain a motion to close the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five special town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Anything further? And all those in favor? Okay, thank you. And next up, we have fiscal year twenty twenty-six water, sewer, and stormwater rates. Ian or Lynn?
Thanks. So we came back with a memo with some recommendations based on our discussion that we had on June second. You'll see in here, we have calculated out some different scenarios based on what was asked by the board, and I know Ian has a PowerPoint tonight to go through just some, just to show you where things end up landing. It's more graphics to show you, like, just how things lay out. But in terms of what we're recommending tonight, we did go back and look at our numbers again and looked at, actually rewatched portions of the meeting just to see, to make sure we captured everything. There was not a clear directive on the different breakdowns of the fixed meter charge, so we offered up a fifty percent increase, a hundred percent, or a hundred and fifty percent. This is to go in tandem with what we offered at the last meeting, which was a two hundred percent and three hundred percent. But the biggest change in this memo is that we are recommending a, a non-variable water rate. So this would just be a standard per cubic foot charge, not tiered, and that is based on the discussion that we had at the last meeting, and felt like we've got a lot going on right now, and that tackling systemic change like that may need, we all may need to sit with it longer. So what you see here tonight are, is a, is a menu full of options that we need you guys to make some decisions on. But ultimately, we have a budget, and how we try to get there is what we need direction on tonight. So fixed charges, and then depending on what you decide for the fixed charge, has an impact on what the rate actual, what the actual user rate will be.
Thank you.
Peggy, I believe I sent you the PowerPoint. If you could pull that up, that would be super.
And then just lastly, in the very end of the memo, is the recommendation on discounts. We ran a bunch of those numbers, I believe that is included in, Ian had a lot of that, those numbers somewhere, oh, further up in the memo. And so we broke it out by sixty-five and older and eighty and older. Ultimately, after looking at all those numbers and the impact that it has, we felt like for this very first year, mirroring what's in place for the stormwater discount was the best approach, at least for this year. And then we could obviously annually continue to take a look at that to figure out if there's a better discount offer in future years.
Can you remind us who receives a discount under stormwater currently?
It's anyone who's eligible for the blind elderly or veteran exemptions through the assessor's office.
Currently, it's about one hundred and twenty-nine residents.
So did you say that you're suggesting that number stays, it'll stay the same for this year, or is that?
We're suggesting that for the first year of implementing a discount for the water sewer, we match what stormwater has.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So I mean, ultimately, we, we can have other, we can increase the numbers, at least from an age perspective.
Yeah, we're not recommending that this year, but certainly you guys can discuss and decide to do that. We just felt like for the very first year, offering a discount, we should just mirror what's already in place on the stormwater side, and then next year, you know, if you want to look at broadening it out, we would have a lot more information by then.
Go ahead. For the, so for the stormwater discount, what age is it for that, that discount? Is it sixty-five?
It's anyone who's eligible for the blind elderly and veteran discount through the assessor's office.
It's both a means and an age test.
Okay.
In terms of what, if it's sixty-five or not, I'll have to double check. I can do that while Ian's going through this.
Okay.
So in the grand scheme of things, one of the most important parts of the rate side discussion is what is the impact to residents? So I put together a couple of slides to show at various stages, in terms of the different offerings that we present to you, what the impact that will be to a given suite of residents. So the first slide shows at an annual level, and I realize that the number's a little small, but it shows four different classes. A total low user, a time bond average user, a moderate user, and a high irrigation user. Now, the time bond average user uses the same metric that Time Bond did for its water sewer study. So this is someone that would be using a certain amount of cubic feet per year, these units. So as you can see, on the given fixed rate changes, it's significant for the first year, but on the whole, the impact is somewhat the same across each of the pieces. So I'll go into why. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see each of the different fixed meter rate changes. So when looking at this, I think it's important to note that when you change the fixed meter rate, there's a certain metric of how this is calculated. Every ten percent increase in the quarterly rate generates about three dollars of increase to a resident during the year. So when you're looking at a fifty percent increase, when you're looking at a hundred percent increase, each ten percent increase is about the same. So a hundred percent increase is about twenty-nine dollars for a resident for the entire year. This is important to note, because when we're looking at the lowest of income users and those who are on a fixed income, we want to make sure that these changes, that the select board is making, is both not impactful to the lowest residents, but also drives a direction forward that we need to be doing infrastructure changes and building upon our retained earnings. Going to the next slide, this shows the two hundred and three hundred fixed meter rate changes. As you can see, at the highest end, these are going to be some sticker shock values. But it's important to note that these numbers, and we feel that, given the time bond study, the highest rate payers will continue to pay these regardless of if there's a tiered or a fixed rate. Now, the important thing as well is how does Long Meadow shape up with its communities? On the next slide, we have the community breakout that Time Bond provided during its rate study process. This shows the average annual household water bill for the FY twenty-five rates that were voted in last year. As you can see, Long Meadow is near the bottom of the rates for the selected communities that Time Bond presented on. The next slide shows where we would be if the rates were presented today as.
Go back one, Peggy.
Back one?
Back one, please. Given the time bond average user, which is a hundred cubic feet, would be our new rate. So as you can see, we are not in the upper echelon, but we are steadily moving into the mid-range of rates. This means that Long Meadow is more competitive when it comes to its rates, but yet we continue to make an effort on removing deferred maintenance and building up our retained earnings. Now unfortunately, Time Bond did not do the similar schedule that they did for sewer, so I can only show this for water. Moving on to our sewer rates, this same story applies. Now, you'll notice that for the average user and the moderate user, we come into the issue of the fifty-five unit cap in the summer months. That was why the numbers look so similar, because if we assume a fifty-five meter cap for the first two quarters of the year, the rates come out very similarly. Now, the next two slides show at a much narrower level to do to two different pieces, with fifty, a hundred, a hundred and fifty in fixed meter rates. And then the next slide shows the two hundred and three hundred, with the last two slides showing in whole the annual water and sewer bill. Now, as a note, this does not include the stormwater rates, because at the moment, it would be too difficult to include the stormwater rates with the bevy of different options, because the, both the fixed meter rate and the single unit rate would change, and I felt that that would be too much in this presentation, as we're only discussing the water and sewer in this instance. Now, on the topic of discounts, this, these numbers here do not reflect the discounts built in. Lynn already alluded to our recommendation where we would like to see the thirty percent discount given to those initial residents. We did some research onto two different demographics, residents sixty-five and older and residents eighty and older. This, after filtering out households that had the same residence, and taking out communities like Glen Meadow, JGS, which not all residents are on the water or sewer system, we had two thousand fifty-four accounts for sixty-five and older, and six hundred ninety-two accounts for residents eighty and older. Using this information that was provided by the town clerk, we were, we were able to come up with the amount of estimated residents available for this discount. Within the memo itself, we saw that there were some very large increases if we were to offer this in the fifty or a hundred percent discount, essentially giving a free fixed meter charge for those residents. It is important to note that these discounts would have to be made up by accounts that are not receiving the discount, and we would have to reflect the rates accordingly. So to end, the town is looking for the recommendation of the select board to propose a fixed meter charge, and we are looking for a recommendation on what discount the town will offer for its water and sewer rates.
And to answer your question, Vinith, it's age seventy and older.
All right, go ahead.
Thanks for all the work you put into this. Obviously, it's very detailed, we put, spent a lot of time on this, and it's appropriately. So I do feel, though, that the, the good news is that we're all kind of talking about the same thing, right? We're all talking about, we all have a commitment to raise the rates to the necessary amount. It's just a matter of how we're doing it, the methodology, you know, and to be honest, it's almost, for many of us, when we're talking about the fixed meter water rate or, and the water usage rate, it's six of one, half of those on the other. We're going to basically benefit from a lower fixed rate or a higher fixed rate commensurally within the water rate, and vice versa, essentially. So I am glad that the tiered water rate is kind of off the table. I wasn't necessarily strongly opposed to it, I just felt that that is a riskier move for our town in general, because I do think that economics being what they are, people do respond to incentives, and it's possible that we would get less than we anticipated, and that would make us raise rates even higher the following year. When we, so really what we're deciding, as you know, is the fixed meter rate, and, you know, I was, I know that Mark had, had mentioned, the reason you gave us the fifty, the hundred, and the hundred fifty percent raises was, I think, because of something Mark said. To be honest, I was, I, when I looked at the whole thing that you were giving us at the last meeting, I was like, well, you know, it seemed reasonable that the two hundred percent increase was reasonable, because, you know, it's, it's a significant increase. We've all agreed that fixed meter rate should increase. For this year, it'd be, it'd be substantially be two hundred percent. And then I brought your sheet from the last meeting, with the two hundred percent increase, the fixed, the meter, the water rate would be six dollars and thirty-four cents. Now, whether it's two hundred percent or one fifty percent, obviously, if it's a hundred fifty percent, then the water rate is going to have to go up, et cetera. So I'm pretty agnostic on it. I would have been comfortable with two hundred percent or one fifty, whatever we decide together. I definitely think your, your thinking on the thirty percent discount is good, in the sense that especially, people are going to already be, just the town as a whole, going to be kind of shocked, I think, when they get this. And when we, if we expand the discount at this time, it's going to be even higher, right, for the general public. So I think it's a good suggestion to start with that. And the last thing I'd suggest is that we definitely put in some sort of like, like insert for the, for the, for the first quarter of next, next fiscal year, just so people kind of understand why their rates are going up, like, it's, well, we all know, but people aren't watching, most people aren't paying attention like we are, right? So like, you know, these are why the rates increased, because of our century-old aging infrastructure, because Springfield's charging us more water, and by the way, they need a new water plant, because we need to consider establishing a backup supply from Enfield, et cetera. And by the way, we are actually quite low relative to other communities. These are things that I think people need to know, and I think that we should consider just throwing that into the bill that is going to be much higher for people, if we can.
Just to add another point to that, Andrew, thank you. For the discounts themselves, I want to just make the select board aware, Lisa was going to be at the meeting, but unfortunately, due to technical difficulties, she wasn't able to join. She wanted to talk about what kind of administrative task would be to offer a sixty-five to seventy or eighty-plus discount. In terms of, you know, the two thousand to seven hundred residents, there would also be the time commitment of confirming that those residents still apply, seeing if residents leave, confirming obituaries, I mean, it's a very, you know, we're talking hours and hours to do this task, and, you know, I certainly don't want to suggest creating a new position for it, but it's certainly something that would require a lot of time, and I, I just want to make sure that the board is aware that if that is the projection that they want to go, that Lisa and I would have to figure out the best way in order for us to do that kind of work.
Andrew, thank you, I think you made some great points, and just on your last point on the insert, I put in a picture of a water main break. That's, when people see that driving by, or you realize that, ooh, that's, that's a big issue, and that's going to, as we've seen from our hearing, our presentations, it's going to continue to happen, and people will be shocked. We had, two years ago, I think, I, I sat at a meeting, watching the first person, O'Neill, I think, our Time Bond presentation, I said, oh, it's coming, and the rates are going to skyrocket, and we delayed it a bit, but now we're here, we know what we have to do. So I, I kind of, a few goals here. So, I, I kind of, a few goals here in thinking about this. If we could have all of our capital costs be tied to our, our fixed rates, that'd be great. But that would be an enormous jump right now. And I don't think that that is the right way to do it at this point. And, Ian, I thought that these were, these are really helpful because it shows you that the fixed rate increases disproportionately hit our low users, which makes sense to a large extent because they were, in the infrastructure, they were locked into the system without paying that much. But on the other hand, the low users are some of our people who may not use water because they're, they're old, they don't have a fixed income. So, my, I would like us to thread the needle a little bit on that and not, not hit those people too hard, but at the same time, recognize that we, there are an incredible amount of projects that we need to do, and we need to have a predictable and steady way to fund that. And my other goal is to not be in a position where, as we saw this year, where we're halfway through the fiscal year, and we learn that we're short on funds. So, and that Lynn and Ian and I met today and had a discussion about how this, this whole process needs to be moved up. And you all have pointed out to me today, we have all the information we have, we need in March or April. We can, we can do this, but we need DPW to talk to us more. The process was talking to the Capital Planning Committee about the five-year plan and what their needs were. And now, it, that's something that we need to close the loop and bring it to us much earlier so we can talk about what needs to be done and how we're going to fund it. And that, that way, when we're giving our presentary annual budget at the town meeting, that people have, know exactly where that money's going. And even if they aren't paying attention to us, as you said, we can at least point to it and say, here's where that money's going, and we have projects needing to be done, these have been thought out, these have been mapped out in advance, and they've been funded, the planning's been funded. And I, but we can do that much earlier in the year, and we can set our rate in, in April or May, where there's no reason for us to, to be doing in June. I think there, there may have been historical reasons why it was done this, this way after town meeting, but I, I think it's unfair to the town, it's unfair to DPW. So, we can push this back. So, I, I think that looking at this, which again, I, I thought was very helpful, I would be probably in favor of coming in at 100% increase this year. So, we are significantly raising that fixed rate. And, you know, the money, it's going to, the budget is what the budget is. We have to fund it no matter what. But I think by increasing that, which is something we've recognized for a while, not going crazy this year on the fixed meter rate, but a significant increase, I, I think is the way to go.
Great, thank you. In terms of the discount, I agree that we should be reflecting what's already in place. I think that's a good place for us to start. This is something that we can visit and see how it's working and, and come back to in the years to come, but I think that's a good place for us to start right now. For the fixed meter rate, I, I agree that, you know, I think Andrew's saying 150, 200, Josh is saying 100. I mean, I really think anywhere between those two is, is completely fine. I, I do think that, one thing that needs to be recognized is that the fixed meter rate in Long Meadow has been artificially low for so long because we have not been doing capital projects. And so, a one-time increase of this magnitude is needed just to get us back into a responsible level where we are actually addressing our infrastructure needs. But again, moving forward after that, there will probably be more increases, but they can be more, you know, smaller increments after that. But this, I think, one-time bigger increase is needed just to get us back to being able to address our infrastructure. And in terms of the big capital projects, I said at the last meeting that I want to stay aggressive with continuing to replace our water mains. Sean brought the projects of the interconnection with Enfield as well as the water tank. From what I've heard and, you know, in our discussions, I think that the interconnection is absolutely necessary, and that's something that we should be planning for and moving forward with. The water tank is something that I do want to hear more about. And, you know, I, I think, I, I would just want more information, more discussion on that. But I, I'm fully in favor of moving forward with the interconnection plan. And so, you know, I, I do want to say that in terms of telling our DPW, our staff, of what, you know, I'm, I'm interested at least in moving forward with so that for planning purposes, folks are aware.
I would just say, I, I agree with, with much of what you guys are saying. I just think predictability, whether it's in town government, in government or in the private sector, it's, it's, it's always good to know what the predictable revenue is gonna be for the projects that we have. And, you know, to, to Beni's point, you've all heard me say, you know, going back, that we have done very limited over the past decades, we haven't addressed the water sewer rates. We've had tiered rates thrown at us as well. I'm not suggesting that I'm all-in with tiered rates, but my priority has always been to make sure that we can help our seniors, help our veterans, help folks that, that need some, some help. And I think at least going this route, we can help the town as a whole with some of these projects and catching up on some of the, some of the needs, some of the, the needs that we should have been doing for decades. So, it's probably sound like a broken record, but I'm happy that the, with Lynn, your work, and Ian, and Lisa, and everyone has come together to put a, a ton of work to, to help get this moving. And I feel like we've been talking about water and sewer for almost every meeting, it seems like, for years, at least since I've been on the board. So, appreciate everyone's work, look forward to tackling some of the infrastructure needs, and, and I think predictability is just one positive aspect of what, what we're doing tonight and moving forward. And let's face it, we, with the weather patterns, whether you get a lot of rain, little rain, that's unpredictable, but at least this is a starting point to help generate some much-needed revenue and move us in a positive direction for some of the, the projects. So, I just, I really do want to thank everyone on the town staff for all of your work and, and the board for robust conversation over the past several months. Thank you.
All right, do we have any motions?
Well, I, I'm personally, first I want to follow on to what Beni said. I, I agree that this interconnection with Enfield is frankly far more valuable in my mind than the possibility of a second water tank because I just think it's just so much more important, essentially. So, just, just bear that, just for people to bear in mind, I agree with Beni. Like, we wouldn't, I would need to hear a lot more on the value of a water tank. But I definitely think, like, if we, if something were to happen to Springfield's water supply, we, we will benefit from another source.
I, I could make, I'd make a motion that we set the fixed meter water, the fixed meter rate at 150% increase, which would make the water rate $6.48. Of course, we can continue to discuss it, but that's my motion.
A second.
All right, any further discussion?
How about Andrew for being the one to put his neck out there, raise the rates?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I...
150% to 100%, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I mean...
I just thought that was in the middle.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, Andrew, and I think if, in the range we're talking about, 100% versus 150 is not a significant difference. And 150 probably gets us, you know, closer to like what we're trying to do with capital and, and all of our other projects.
No, this is it. I, I just, I found this chart kind of striking on that. The highest fixed meter rate leads to the highest bills for the low users and a lower bill overall for the highest users and moderate users. I think that that is pushing my thinking a bit on this. But in the long run, we're not talking about a massive amount of money per person. It may make a difference to them, but I just thought that that was pretty, pretty striking.
You're talking about that bar, that teal bar on the far right?
Correct.
When I look at the actual amount of dollars when we increase, like right now, for example, I'm looking at last meeting's chart, a 200% increase would be $25 a quarter. So, 150 would be less than that. That would be, I don't know, I'm just guessing, $20, $19 a quarter. I think that, I guess it's reflective of how low it is right now, essentially. That seems reasonable, not too onerous, kind of knowing in the future we might actually do more, frankly. So, but again, if, if there's a strong consensus, do 100%. We're talking about, not a big, not a big deal.
Problem is, I, I've been on this board forever. I've been on for four years, so I just, I just inertia, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think Andrew kind of hit on this. With us talking about this in percentages of 150% increase, 200% increase, it gives a very different perception because they are, like I said, kind of artificially low at this point. But actually putting it in dollars shows that, how little of an increase it is, you know, per quarter.
And it leads to an $80,000 increase in fixed meter charges, which...
It's substantial.
It's helpful, yeah. All right. Well, do you want to move for 150 or you want to do 200?
I've already moved for 150. I'm okay with that. We don't want to get too, just the middle of the road is usually good in general. You're doing 180, from 100 to 200 now.
No, just asking. All right, so if there's nothing further, I will, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, and how about for sewer rates?
Do you want to say a motion, Andrew?
Yeah, I move, I'm not sure what the fixed rate would be if we went up 150%. Is that here? I'm sorry. I was looking at last meeting.
Yeah, it's 516 is the, is the variable rate.
Can you point that out? So...
It's on different...
So, okay, I move, we, we increase the fixed sewer rate by 150% of what it currently is, and that would make the sewer rate $5.16.
Second.
Second.
Anything further for, for discussion? All right, all those in favor? Okay.
Stormwater rate?
Yeah, do we?
We had at the last meeting. I don't believe you voted it, but I also would ask if, normally, water bill or inserts for utility bills have to be approved, pre-approved by you, but we won't have time between now and the next meeting to have you pre-approve it. So, if you could approve us creating a, and inserting it, that'd be great. While I find the stormwater rate, unless you have it.
Is it, is the stormwater rate 974?
Yes.
Per equivalent residential unit?
Yes.
But I didn't understand the annual rate being about $116.84. That's basically what the cost would be?
Each household, yeah.
Per, each household, if you like. So, I'll move, we set the stormwater rate at $9.74 per ERU and with an annual rate of 116.84.
Second.
And any further discussion? All those in favor? And Lynn, do we, or is there an appetite for extending the stormwater discount to the water and sewer fixed rates? Is that what I was hearing before?
Yes. So, I will move to apply the same discount used for stormwater to water, water rates...
Water fixed rates.
Water fixed rates.
Fixed meter rate, yeah.
Yeah, water fixed meter rates.
Second.
All right, anything further? All those in favor? And for sewers, though?
Oh, yeah, and I move to apply the stormwater discount to the sewer fixed meter rates.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor?
And then I move to approve a utility bill insert explaining the, explaining the increases in fixed meter and variable rates.
Andrew Lamb's increase.
Second.
All right, anything further? And all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you.
Do we get it all? All votes?
We'll have a special meeting. Okay, so, moving on to the bottle shop liquor license update. We got an email on this. Did not make it to the agenda?
Oh, it should have.
The letter we got an email for, and Mr. Thomas is also here.
Oh, he is, okay.
Yep.
I'm not, it's not coming up in mine.
You know what, the old agenda topic probably got reinserted in, so it's possible that...
Oh, okay.
It's in the backend somewhere. I, I'll retro that right now.
Okay, thanks. All right, Mr. Thomas, thank you for coming. Why don't you introduce yourself?
Sure, James Thomas, 28th and 3rd, Long Meadow.
Okay, and we asked you to come back to give us an update on the liquor license. Can you please do that?
I'd love to be able to give you an update on the liquor license. The Puns have been in China for, I don't know how long. I've reached out to my lawyer to reach out to them four times, been responded to once. And they were asking who was buying the license. So, they're paying, the lawyers for the Puns are paying attention to these meetings. They think they have control of the license.
So, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I, I got information...
I can't, I can't put the license someplace else.
No, I understand, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Okay.
We, the town reached out to the Puns to ask for an update, and we were told that you had, there's a lawsuit currently...
Currently, absolutely.
That maybe holding things up, may, may not.
Your guess is as good as mine. The, the response I get from them is dribs and drabs at best.
So, I, personally, I, I wish you had told us that about the lawsuit. I think full disclosure from the beginning could have been very helpful. I, I will tell the board what I, I'm thinking. This, I learned about this today. I feel very uncomfortable letting the landlord pick the next owner of, pick the next package store owner in, in Long Meadow. Because I, I agree. I don't know where there's anywhere else. The only other, I don't know if there's anything on Long Meadow Street right now by the mobile. Maybe, I don't know if that's a good spot. There's a lot of parking, yada, yada. The shops, we already have two full liquor licenses there. I don't think we can put one there.
Right.
So, I, I generally agree that there are no other spots for this, as our town is currently set. So, which gives the landlords effectively, whoever they give a lease to, can get a liquor license. That's our job. That's, that's not their job, and...
Why they think they have the ability to dictate. And they've reached out to other liquor store owners to buy the license, to, to put a spot there. They don't have any control of that license.
I really, yeah, I, I don't like that.
Right.
So, and according to the lease I, or the complaint that I read today, you have a lease. And you're, when is that lease, or did it expire?
No, I have, I've got another 12 years and 12, 15 years on the lease.
Okay, and so, there's a lawsuit for specific performance. Mr. Thomas has sued and said, I have a lease, the Puns had to keep a certain amount of insurance on, they did not. I'm not saying, making any claims on whether who's right or wrong, but that'll be for the court to decide or for the parties to make an agreement on. But if we, if we took the license as has been kind of hanging over all these proceedings for years now, it would let the Puns decide who owns a liquor license. And I don't feel comfortable doing that. And I, and I know that this is new knowledge to you guys, but I, I wanted to make sure you, you were aware of my... But I, I wanted to make sure you were aware of my thinking and where we're at now. And I, so I appreciate you coming in, and we have our update. So any, any questions or any comments from the other board members?
Yeah, thank you for coming in, Mr. Thomas. I mean, I know that you keep saying that you don't have any updates, but just, just communication is the important part, really, and, and so thank you for coming in.
And some of my hesitancy about not updating, but being in front of the meeting, is I don't want to show my cards to the Puns.
Yeah, yeah. I completely understand that, and I empathize with your position. I know that this has been in the works for a while, that you've been trying to sell this liquor license for a long time.
Long time.
And that.
And, and, and my point is, if they say no to whoever buys it, I will reopen the store myself. I mean, I'm certainly capable of doing that.
Right. Yeah, and, and I, and I completely agree with Josh that I, I don't like how this is being handled by the Puns. I want you, as the owner of your liquor license, to be able to sell it. But I also don't know exactly what we can do here. And I know beyond giving Mr. Thomas more extensions on this, what else we can do to resolve this? This, I mean, this is just a very odd situation where there really is just one place in town where this can be put.
And I, and I have looked at other spots.
Yeah, and I.
You know, I looked at the Hampden Bank. I looked at the Ski House possibility. That dried up. And the Hampden Bank was just such an awkward space. It just was not going to work for a retail space.
So, yeah, I don't know if there's anything else that we can do to find another solution to this or figure out how to resolve this, but this is, this isn't good for anyone that this keeps dragging on.
No.
And now we're seeing actually businesses open up in that same plaza, and this is being held up. And I know that there's a buyer who would like to run up a business and is eager to do so. And this, I, I'm absolutely frustrated by this.
And, and the Puns have made it even more difficult because they've got a leasing agent who won't talk to me. I can only deal with the Puns.
I'm just looking at the schedule for the court case. And the final pre-trial conference is scheduled for July 25th. So, and there's a motion to extend tracking order. I just learned, I learned about this during the meeting, so I, I was looking it up. So I, I would need, I think, more information from, on what's going on with the court.
There's no real loss to prove at this point, so we haven't really pressed the suit as diligently as, as we possibly should. I don't, you know, there's no loss to, to claim at this point.
Well, it's a, it's a lawsuit for specific performance. So you are saying, let me use the space.
Right.
And so that is something to press. I mean, you don't need, you don't have a loss.
Yeah.
It's a different type of claim.
Right.
So, but you can't make the, the court has a deadline that has a deadline.
Right.
The judgment deadline is June 1st, or July, January 4th, 2027. So, you know, I don't know. We are, we're in a terrible spot. I, I'm sure the other members of the board are shocked at how much we talk about liquor licenses, minutia lately, but I, I just, I can't, I can't take the license from you for the reasons I said.
Yeah.
And I, I'm incredibly frustrated by that. But this is a town resident who's getting stuck a little bit.
Third generation.
Yeah, well, yeah, so I, I would rather, I'd rather give a slight extension again. And I, the, the, two extensions ago, I didn't think I would do any more extensions. But I, I would like to give an extension here more, get an update on the court case. Whether it's going to trial, whether there's, it's motion practice, but that, that's my thing. Because I, I just don't feel comfortable letting this out of our hands. And I think if we terminate the license, it's out of our hands, and it's into the Punt family's hands. And landlords can dictate what they want, but I, I don't want to feel like we're getting stronger up here.
Yeah, I completely agree. I mean, I'm in favor of giving an extension, whether, just looking at our meeting schedule, whether I think it might be appropriate to do it until August 18th or September 2nd. Get another update at that point.
And I'll keep you informed if any changes prior to that.
I, I do not want to find out. I, I understand you want to play it, but that was public information. But I never would have thought to look. But don't, just, you can see where it's, I'm sympathetic. So please talk to us.
Absolutely. I certainly will. And I will keep you up to date as to what is going on.
Okay. Mike, can you remind us what the motion was the last time?
Yes, it was to, hold on a second. That was on May 5th. Wait one second. Yeah, so May 5th. Motion to approve the license through June 16th to expire if an ABCC application has not been placed by said date. And it was seconded and carried.
Okay.
Okay. So I will move to approve and extend Mr. Thomas's liquor license until September 3rd, unless a ABCC, or what was that portion? Don't need that portion?
You can either say if a ABCC amendment application is put in place, or you can say, or it depends on what your appetite is for an additional update.
Well, okay, so I'll just make the motion to approve and extend Mr. Thomas's liquor license until September 3rd, 2025. So September 2nd meeting, by then, we can get an update and make another decision.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, set the fiscal year 2026 select board meeting schedule. And anything we should know about this, Mike?
I think one thing that I failed, we failed to capture in this is that right now, there's our plans for holding conference room space meetings at the Greenwood Center. And with that, LCTV is in the process of building out a satellite studio over there so that we can virtually, or excuse me, so that we could record select board meetings and broadcast it to the public, similar to we do in this room. At this time, they're working on that build out right now, so it's likely that we won't have it set up for the July 21st meeting for the select board to meet there. But we are planning on rolling out board and committee meetings who are not, who do not have PEG access coverage over there. So if the select board has an appetite to come view the site, see it, you know, as it starts to get built out, we can talk about maybe for the September 2nd meeting, starting to meet over there. So I will say the, the schedule is subject to change based on the location, but it's likely that July 21st and August 18th will be here unless we have some additional updates as to if the space is available.
Okay.
I just want to make a note, too, that this schedule, looking into 2026, February through April, reflects the same kind of schedule that we did this year, where we are avoiding meetings during February vacation and April vacation. Thank you for doing that. I think that's wise.
All right, anything further? Okay, I entertain a motion to select, to adopt the select board fiscal year 2026 meeting schedule as presented on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? All right, thank you very much.
For the liaison assignments discussion, I realize that there's no document posted there. I would suggest honestly defer to that to the next meeting so that Shelley can be in attendance.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that anyway, yeah. All right, any objections to that? Okay, we'll bring that up the next meeting with Shelley here. Fiscal year 2026 tax title custodian appointment. There's a motion right in the document. If anyone would like to, go ahead.
Yep, I move that the select board appoint Town Treasurer/Collector Erica Brunel, Tax Title Custodian through June 30th, 2026 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 60, Section 77B.
Second.
All right, anything further? And all those in favor? Okay, fiscal year 2026 Town Council slash Labor Council appointments?
All right, I move to appoint Mead Tellerman-Costa LLC as the Town Council for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
All right, anything further?
Just a quick question. So did this, this came up a couple of years ago when we looked at like multiple councils? Is that just practice or?
Yes.
Yeah, just every couple of years, we kind of open it up or?
So every year, you have to do an appointment of Town Council and Labor Council. A couple of years ago, we did a formal RFP process, or solicited bids.
We're not required to do that every year.
Right.
Okay.
And we hadn't done one, I, I don't know.
It was a good amount of time before that.
And we, and when we were doing that process, we didn't do it for Sullivan, Hayes and Quinn, correct? We only did it for Town Council?
Right, Mead Tellerman-Costa does have the ability to be Labor Council for us if we wanted. Some of those other firms did, did bid saying they could do it if we wanted to. The rates at Sullivan, Hayes and Quinn are, there's, they're really low.
And from what we've heard from you, you're satisfied with their, yeah, and we don't want to switch a horse midstream.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially labor stuff, yeah.
Yeah, they, everything I've heard, they sound great. Okay, I'm sorry, where are we at?
Just have to appoint Labor Council.
Okay. Do we vote, we voted on Town Council?
No, we haven't voted on Town Council. So we have a second for Town Council.
Okay, yeah. All right, anything further? All those in favor?
I move to appoint Sullivan, Hayes and Quinn as Labor Council for FY 2026.
Second.
All right, anything further? And all those in favor? Okay, we have a Long Meadow Pride street closure application?
I move to approve the Long Meadow Pride street closure application for September 7th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, and anything further? All those in favor? A nice early application. And a one-day liquor license application?
I move to approve the one-day liquor license application from the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund for July 10th, 2025.
Second.
Anything further? All those in favor? And traffic and roads amended policy?
Okay, I'm happy to start and then kick it to Mike, who's, as the Assistant Town Manager, this falls under his hat now. So the policy, there's a couple of recommended changes in here. One is to actually reflect that we have a complete streets bylaw. So we had added a section in here that mentions that, and then it's important because later on in the policy, where it talks about the Traffic and Road Advisory Group Initial Review, it, it gives exception to implementation of, of projects. The Department, the DPW has jurisdiction over implementing projects that are listed on the Complete Streets Prioritization Plan. In our work for the Complete Streets Advisory Group that we had to revise our plan, we realized that that plan was in conflict with the select board policy. With, a lot of those are traffic calming measures or measures that are listed in the traffic calming policy that require select board approval, but the Complete Streets Prioritization Plan is, is its own entity that the Department, the Department of Public Works has authority over. So we just wanted to call that out here. And so you'll see that change. And then another change that we're recommending, we've been seeing an uptick in traffic calming applications, and a lot of them are in areas where there's active construction or active construction in a close proximity, and they are a detour route. And so we've spent time talking about those applications, and no one feels comfortable recommending any changes because it's a temporary traffic change. And so it, it wouldn't make sense to, to enact some sort of traffic calming measure, knowing that the quantity of traffic on that road is not always what it is.
So I know that one is for my neighborhood, so, but I do appreciate that you all took steps and have done things to, to help. So thank you. Just one question on it. Applications may be real, but were you evaluated? Do they need to come back in, or if something came in during active construction, will you look at it again?
Good question. I don't know that we've gotten.
Yeah, I think in our initial discussions, we talked about following up with the applicant within a certain timeframe after to see, to gauge how that, how it's going after post-construction. Because we have seen that a lot of the applications that have come in are, are in heavily trafficked areas because of construction. And for instance, off of Converse during the work on Converse and Laurel Street intersection, and then obviously similarly to Emerson Road currently, we have some feedback from there also. And they're also going to be, they're having drainage work right now, and they're also going to be milled and overlaid sometime in August and September. So, yeah, a, a lot of, a lot of that stuff, the projects have to complete, come to fruition for us to really dive into some of the traffic mitigation.
Okay.
And then, I don't know if it's in this round, I do anticipate we're going to be bringing you back some more traffic-related topics, but one of the other ones we were considering is a limitation on how frequently you can submit a traffic calming application. So we just dealt with Ellington two years ago, and there's a new application in. And how do we feel about that? Is that, are we going to allow that every year, every two years? Or is it really something like every three to five years, you can't, you know, you need to wait? So that's something we've been considering.
And if I can add, too, there's, there's a distinction between the traffic calming application and there's a traffic enforcement complaint form on the police website that really needs to be kind of highlighted, because during these temporary situations, there is also the ability to reach out to police to suggest increased enforcement or to suggest a traffic, not necessarily a full-blown traffic study, but just some extra traffic detail in that area during that time. Which in some of these cases has been, has been honored so that we can kind of get a better sense as to what's, what's going on in those areas. And we're also going to suggest an amendment to the application itself, because right now, the way it's listed on the online form is everyone who's submitting it can check off every single traffic mitigation process possible out of the 15 there. We want to limit it to about seven or eight, or maybe cut that in half, so that it really narrows down what the applicant is looking for, so we don't have to pick and choose and kind of make assumptions off of them choosing every box as to something that they wish to have see in their neighborhood that makes sense.
Okay. Would you like us to vote on this tonight, or we can bring it back next, next meeting?
You can bring it back next time. I mean, that keeps with your rules of procedure, that you get it the first night, and then you don't vote till the second.
Yeah, I, I'm okay voting tonight if there's a motion, otherwise we can vote on it next time. We'll vote on it next time. All right, anything in correspondence? I know we, we talked a little bit about the Parks and Rec letter earlier, and which I, just to put my own two cents on this, I was, I asked Lynn about this a couple of years ago, because the rumor I always heard is that somebody had donated money to pay for the, for upkeep of the clay courts forever. And it turns out it was $12,000 to buy brushes and do it the first time. So it costs the town tens of thousands of dollars to get the courts up to playable condition. And I absolutely agree, it's not, it's not worth it. You can go to Forest Park if you want to play for, for cheap. You can join the field club if you want to pay a little bit more. There's other options, and it just does not get enough use for us to pay for it. So I absolutely agree. I'm glad the Parks and Rec Commission has brought it. I'm glad the Parks and Rec Commission has brought it up to us. I, I look forward to thinking about it and hearing ideas on what people want it to be.
Yeah, I agree. I, it was a really good email, and I think even beyond the pickleball course, they did offer some other good ideas too, and I would really like for us to explore a better way for us to use that space. And then another email from correspondence, I also just wanted to thank Jennifer Falcone for her email. In what is really kind of hard to believe, she detailed an incident with Mr. Gunn on Dennis Road, the same street that the Chows live on, that happened 15 years ago. And it probably would have been easy for her to not have reached out, because this happened so long ago, but as she said in her email, it was hard for her to read about what had happened and think back about how she had almost exactly the same experience with him 15 years ago. And it's, I think, an important piece of information for our residents to know about as we continue to navigate this entire situation.
Thank you. Anything else from the rest of the board? Who would like to, Darren?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.